This meeting to order. Welcome to the New Hanover County Schools December Regular Board Meeting. Thank you for joining us and for those of you that are in the audience, we will be repeating this message in a little bit. We appreciate your interest, participation, and advocacy on behalf of our children and their education. Before we begin, a quick reminder that masks are currently still required in this building as a result of the New Hanover County Schools District-wide Mask Mandate. Please keep your mask above your nose and under your chin. If you are signed up to speak during call to the audience, you may remove your mask when you reach the microphone to present to the board. If you are unable to wear a mask, a reminder that this meeting is being livestreamed on the NHCS YouTube page and can be viewed in real time. Thank you in advance for adhering to this requirement. This evening, we will have students present and we are committed to creating safe and welcoming spaces for them and our community as a whole. Great, next item on the agenda is roll call. Ms. Bowie.
Good evening, Ms. Adams.
Here.
Mr. Boyer.
Here.
Ms. Justice.
Ms. Craybill.
Here.
Mr. McManus.
Here.
Ms. Walker.
Here.
And Mr. Wildebohr.
Present.
All right, thank you very much. We do have a forum present. This evening, we will be starting with a work session and a legal services presentation. As you all know, we put out an RFP not too long ago for legal services and this evening we will be receiving presentations from two firms, Pointer Spruill LLC and Barrington Smith LLP. So I believe we will start with Pointer Spruill. Good evening and welcome, Ms. Cornetto.
Good evening, I'm Katie Cornetto and it's nice to see you all, Dr. Bowles, members of the board. I'm going to just test the technology and it works beautifully. It is a pleasure to be here today on behalf of Pointer Spruill LLP, a law firm in downtown Raleigh, and it has several other locations that I'll get to in just a moment. You all have our RFQ and it was several pages that we submitted to you all. In addition, we have four short slides that we're going to run through very briefly. We know we've got 10 minutes and then we're going to be answering questions that you all have. Our slogan, as you can see, is large enough to serve you, small enough to know you. You all are, of course, one of the many Boards of Education in North Carolina. I come to you with a little different experience in addition to representing local Boards of Education. I worked for nearly a decade as the General Counsel to the State Board of Education and that had its own exciting times and with all the experience there, I wanted just to tell you that in that capacity, at one point in time, the State Board of Education needed to seek outside counsel for litigation. And as General Counsel, I worked with them to find the right fit. The right fit for the State Board of Education was Pointer Spruill and I'm going to tell you why. And I'm going to tell you just a little bit about the firm. The firm is comprised of approximately 100 attorneys. It was 90 before we came. And we joined the firm in the middle of October and November of this past year. There are four offices in North Carolina. It's a full-service firm and we have offices in Rocky Mount, Raleigh, Charlotte, and Southern Pines. Some fast facts about Pointer Spruill. Two firms merged in the 80s. Pointer, which was established in the 40s, and Spruill, which was established in the 1880s. So it's a longstanding, traditional firm that's now expanded to the area of education law practice. And as a firm, we chose to come to Pointer because it's got a well-earned reputation for providing prompt, cost-effective, and professional legal services. And we endeavor to match our services with your budgetary needs. And our strategy enables us to assist clients effectively and efficiently in connection with the wide range of legal needs and transactions. So let's meet the team. There are 10 of us who practice education law at Pointer Spruill. Our firm is full-service and I'll get to what that means. But we operate as a firm within a firm. We operate as education law practitioners so we deal with all the issues that confront local Boards of Education. Of the 10 education law attorneys I've got with me today, Brian Shaw, Laura Crumpler, Brandon McPherson, and Rachel Hitch. In addition, we have four associates, Dr. Amy Clay, Rebecca Williams, Rachel Nicholas, and Grace Pennera. But what sets us apart? You can hire a law firm, they can do your legal work. What makes us different for you all? There is substantial information out there about your board and its functioning and it's hard work. We've studied it and we've seen great promise and great grit from you all. Our commitment to every board we serve is a commitment of responsiveness and to partner with you. We're not going to make decisions for you. We're going to share with you all the information you need to make an informed decision. You can talk to our clients and learn. We're zealous advocates and we work alongside the board and it's not just a typical school day. We're there at night, we're there in the morning, and we're there all weekend and we're there in holidays because your work doesn't stop nor does ours. Our people are our greatest resource and as I mentioned to you, what sets us apart is we don't just have 10 lawyers. We have 10 attorneys who are committed to public education in North Carolina. Our firm is unique in that we have a doctor of psychology who is also an attorney practicing special education law with us. That's Dr. Amy Clay. You're not going to find that just anywhere. We have Brian Shaw, who is a beloved professor of law at Campbell Law School. He teaches our future generation of education law practitioners. He also teaches the practicing attorneys about case law updates at our regular continuing legal education classes. We have Laura Crumpler, who is of counsel, and she serves after 30-plus years representing the State Board of Education at the Department of Justice. In fact, a special little tip, Laura in the 80s was an Assistant City of Wilmington Attorney. I asked if I could share that fact, but I think you should know. She says, it shows how old she is, but we know how committed she is to public boards and the service. But her true passion is education and she started out as a public school teacher in addition to two other of our attorneys. So we don't just practice law. We practice education law in public schools of North Carolina for the betterment of boards. One of the very important things that we want to communicate to you all is that every single expected and unexpected issue that you deal with, you don't need a legal answer, but you need to know the law. Sometimes you need to have strategy in play. We do all that with our clients and we help work through issues and you all decide how Lastly, a day in the life of a board looks like what's on Slide 4. We think the honeycomb busy bee illustrates and depicts what you all are confronted with. On the slide, it talks about all the different issues and there are probably about 1,000 more. What we know is that you never have the same day twice and we understand that in protecting children, the stakes are high and you need to have partners who are available to you at a moment's notice with the right answers and the right approach to serve your needs. One of the most important things that we can ask of you before you make your decision is to talk to our clients now. They will tell you how we're responsive. They will tell you how we counsel them and they will tell you that they trust us to give them the information to make informed decisions. And from your perspective, your job humbles us. Why you decided to be a board member of a public school system is amazing in and of itself. And it's not easy work, but with the right supports, you all can do great things. And I'll open up the floor for questions.
All right, thank you so much. I will turn this over actually to Ms. Walker and Ms. Craybill, who led the RFP Review Team. So Ms. Craybill and Ms. Walker.
You want to start with your first question?
Okay, yeah, the, one of the things that we are looking for is the ability for you all to help build capacity within us so that we do not have to call you every day, you know, or every week for an issue. So how would you guys go about doing that and are you available? Well, go ahead and I'll just start with there.
That question is my favorite question. So I'm glad you led off with it. One of the reasons is that part of, you know, Katie started to tell you some of the things that set us apart, but we feel very strongly about that because we have all benefited from public education. We are very careful about several things. One of them is we love to teach. We love to teach boards. It's my job, or the way I see my job, is that for everything you have to go through, you have to learn from it. And it's my job to not just finish the legal part of it, but to end that by saying, okay, what could we, in hindsight, what could we have done differently? What can we put in place so you never have to go through this again? I'd like everything that you, if you ever have to hire a lawyer, it should always be that when you get to the end of that experience, you learn something that helps you from having to do that again. And we feel very strongly about that. We do that from boards all the way down, as long as the board will let us. We do lots of training with boards on how to work through conflicts, what your piece is versus what the administration piece is in the school system. We love to work with boards to learn new things and even your administrators, we love to talk to administrators, we want to teach them about special education. You know, we want to teach, give them the tools to be able to make the decisions and understand the decisions that they're making in that moment that prevent them from ever having to call us. If we do a great job, we don't hear from you that often.
Thank you.
Awesome. Well, I have a follow-up question. We did a lot of discussion with our senior staff about what was important to the district and what we needed. One of the questions was, do you guys have any of your firm that specializes in special education law and especially when it comes to getting critical updates on federal and state law changes?
Well, it's me again. It just so happened that I supervise our special education, attorneys that practice special education and we are heavily involved in special education on a national level, all the way down to the local level for school boards. We present nationally, we consult with the, National School Board Association has a National Council of School Attorneys, which has a smaller group of attorneys that they consult with on special ed matters in terms of trying to help Congress understand the implications of congressional decisions and the law and what, how that looks at the local level. So we present on the state level, we present at the local level, and we stay very up to date. We have some resources that we spend the money on that are specific to special education because it is so nuanced and so heavily regulated. It's very easy for school systems to miss dotting an i or crossing a t. And so we keep up to date, not just on the law cases that go through the court systems, but even on the administrative decisions at the administrative level before it ever gets to court. And we've done, we've had an extra eye on that since COVID because COVID presented so many unique issues for special needs students that, you know, we wanted to try to follow, what are the trends? What are the lowest courts or the lowest administrative units deciding now on issues of things like compensatory education and how you provided FAP during COVID and those kinds of things? So we stay very up to date on special ed.
Just to follow up to that, thank you. How quick is your return on that kind of stuff when there's like due process issues? You know, how fast do you get back to, are you available to get back? Are you pretty quick?
On special ed issues or any of the other issues?
Yeah.
So one of the things you should know about us is we, my business card has my cellphone number on it. Every single special ed director that I work with knows if they call me, if I can answer, I will answer. If not, I'm going to respond in a text message and let them know when I can answer and is it, you know, is it an emergency? If it's an emergency, I'll step away. I've stepped away from a Saturday night concert. It doesn't matter. When the phone rings and somebody has an issue, we answer it.
Okay.
So they're not waiting. If you don't hear from me, then something's wrong with me. You should send someone to check on us.
Okay, you want to do the next one?
Yeah, I just had one more that wasn't quite covered in some of your stuff. Which one of you will be our lead counsel that we would go to on the regular versus a specialty need that one of our senior staff might have?
I'd love to take that question. We are all capable of helping you, but I know what it means to have the speed dial and the one point of contact to get you what you need quickly. I am able to do that for you, Rachel is able to do that for you, and Brian. We were actually fighting in a meeting earlier today about who it would be. So you would have some say in who that one person is. We get why you want one person and we're happy to help with that.
Thank you. All right, I think some other board members have some additional questions?
Yeah.
We'll go to Ms. Justice, oh, sorry, did you want to first, Ms. Walker?
No, 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 I was just saying.
Let's go to Ms. Justice and then we'll go over to Mr. Wildebohr.
Okay, my name, you are representing first of all our students and one of the things I have seen in the past with law firms or individual lawyers, there seems to be a confusion or a field that the, who tends to being served is not just the board, but the organization and that's what students. I think you assure me that they're going to be the primary cause of justice in that very case for the firm or any individual lawyer.
Oh dear, did I blow that? Should I repeat it? I can repeat it.
It would help if you could, it's hard to hear.
Okay, and I'll take this down to, and I did not know, thank you, whoever did that. Yeah, okay, the number one, now I understand the confusion on your face. It makes me feel better because you couldn't hear me, not the question. The number one focus of us and any law firm should be the students. You're serving the students first. And I've had associations with other firms, other individual lawyers in other districts and in here too, and oftentimes it just feels, and it may not be true, but it gets the feeling that the legal services are serving either the board's, I guess, interests or maybe our employees' interests as opposed to the interest of the students first. How could you assure me that that would always be the students' needs, what's best for them, that you are going to be responding to?
Good evening, Brandon McPherson, happy to be here. Ms. Justice, the thing I'll say is our North Star is serving kids and doing what's best for students. Say what?
Could you speak up now?
Yes ma'am, yes ma'am, can you hear me?
Yeah, I can now.
Our North Star is serving students and doing what's best for students. What I will tell you though, is our ethical obligations because of our profession is to serve our client. And in this instance, our client would be the Board of Education. And there are going to be instances in which the interest of an individual student or group of students will be contrary to the Board of Education. So please understand that anyone who serves in this role will have an ethical obligation to do what is in the best interest of its client, the Board of Education. And that is an ethical obligation that we cannot do anything about because that is who our client would be.
Okay, so this is a follow-up question. And what you're saying then in essence is it would be up to the board to ensure that it's the students' needs that were to be coming first as opposed to the board's?
Yes ma'am, and I believe, I don't serve with a single board in the state of North Carolina who doesn't use students as their North Star. They keep the students at the forefront of all educational decisions and doing what's in the best interest of kids.
Thank you for your response.
Okay, I'm going to pass this to Mr. Wildebohr and we do need to be aware of time because Barrington Smith still has to present. So, Mr. Wildebohr.
Just real quickly then, what area of schools in southeastern North Carolina do you serve or have served recently? What other school boards?
We currently serve as the Board Attorneys for the Pender County Board of Education, which is your neighboring school districts. We also are currently serving in special counsel with Onslow for some specific issues. So we are in the southeast and have been working in southeast for quite a while.
Thank you.
Yes, Ms. Justice?
This is almost a follow-up question. You said you're representing Pender County? I thought the Schwartz firm was representing Pender County.
Pointer Spruill are the Board Attorneys for the Pender County Board of Education.
But they weren't, they previously?
As of November 1st.
Okay, thank you.
Just to help clear up any confusion, I'm Brian Shaw. I used to be a partner with Schwartz and Shaw. And all of our attorneys, except my friend and partner, Richard Schwartz, left and joined Pointer Spruill in October, November. And so Pender is now with this set of attorneys, who has represented Pender for a number of years as well.
Okay, thank you very much.
Mr. McManus, all right, and then let's close it out and we'll end with this question.
One quick question. We are in the process of suing an insurance company for as much money as we possibly can to take care of a plaintiff situation that we have that you may well be aware of. This is the time to discuss it. How would you transition what knowledge our present legal arena has to you? All the background what's taken place in federal?
There'd be a series of meetings. I mean, it would not be a singular event. It would be a coordinated effort to follow up on every legal issue that you have existing at the time. I mean, it's that included. So I mean, it's going to be a series of meetings getting up to speed, leading over to a handoff, just like with any other transition, whether it be from board members to superintendents to school administrators. It's a process and it takes a period of time to get the handoff of information, especially with the detail to which any litigation involved. Yes?
Thank you very much. Thank you all so much for being here this evening. I know that you traveled to be with us and we appreciate you answering our questions. And on that note, if you all would take a seat, I believe we are going to invite our representatives from Barrington Smith up for their presentation. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
My name is Eva Dubison. I'm a partner in the firm of Barrington Smith and this is my partner Rod Malone. And we're here to present to you tonight on our proposal to serve as, to continue serving as your General Counsel. Now, obviously you've gotten to know us over the past about 18 months as we've filled into that role. But I look back in our files today and our firm has actually represented New Hanover County Schools for Specialty Matters almost as long as we've been doing this, back at least to the early 1980s. And so to give you that background, our firm has been in existence for nearly 60 years and our education law group has been representing school boards for more than 40 years. And we have been counsel, and some of our clients have been with us that whole time. We've been counsel to the Wake County Board of Education since 1978. And there are 18 of us now who do exclusively public schoolwork. All of our clients are public school Boards of Education. We have a couple dozen for whom we are General Counsel, but we have represented at least 100 for those specialty matters. So almost every school district in the state has used us at some time or another. Now, you have seen what we do in school board meetings, but most of what we do, that's sort of the iceberg, you know, the tip of the iceberg and then below the surface is most of our job, which is supporting the school system as a whole. Now, as you heard, your attorneys represents the Board of Education and not the administration. And that's always important to remember. But often the way that we do that is by supporting the people that you've hired. And so our attorneys have walked with your staff through some very sticky personnel situations over the last couple of years and for many years before. We've handled a lot of property and construction matters for you, which I'll let Rod talk a little bit more about. And we have served as your Special Education Department's EC Counsel, again, I believe for more than 20 years, as I look back in our files. I can see that we've been doing trainings for your staff on special education. I found a training that our partner Ann Majestic gave to your staff on special education in 1992. So we have that institutional knowledge and that stability that I think is important for a school board. And it's important to remember that we stick with our clients, elections should not matter to the Board of Attorney. Once we represent the Board of Education, we help you achieve your goals, as long as it's lawful and we help you design something that is lawful and we help you achieve it. When there's an election, if a new board wants something different, we help them achieve that. That's the purpose of the Board Attorney is to represent the board and help it achieve its goals. And so as we do that, I think some examples of the way that we have helped in the COVID area particularly, using that institutional knowledge we have and those relationships that we have by the fact that we represent school systems across the state and are involved at a national level. And I'll give you an example. My partner Carolyn Merkison spearheads the Special Education Representation for New Hanover. And of course, we were working frantically during school closures to figure out how our clients could serve students with special needs and there was little to no guidance coming out from the state and federal level. And so this summer, as Carolyn and I were answering the same questions over and over, we decided all of our clients have the same questions. Instead of doing this work separately for everyone, let's get them together. And we ended up doing a webinar that I know New Hanover participated in, as well as I believe 29 other, or close to 75 EC administrators from about 30 or so districts, where we just answered those questions that everyone had about how to write IEPs when you didn't know if you were in Plan B or Plan C, and how to communicate with parents, how to hold IEP meetings virtually, how to provide speech therapy and those sorts of services. And at the same time, we were communicating, Carolyn is part of a working group, an IDEA working group on the national level. We were communicating with school attorneys across the state, as our colleagues said, and bringing that knowledge to your EC department proactively so that you could anticipate and avoid problems before they came up. And I know that Carolyn helped the EC department put together some proactive communications to parents and some forms that could be used by staff rather than waiting for things to go wrong. And that's an important part of our practice. And so what we would propose to do for the Board of Education is essentially to continue that longstanding representation and bring that expertise to your staff and to you. And so what I hope you might do is speak to the people who work for you about whether they feel they have been supported over the last year and a half, whether they feel they've gotten information when they needed it and gotten creative ideas when they needed those. And if they have, then I hope that you would continue to support them by allowing them to continue to work with us.
I don't have a ton to add over what Eva said. I would just say that for my practice areas primarily, construction, I've been working with Addie even back when he was in Wake County and certainly over the years before we even started representing you in this capacity. I've worked with him on contracting issues, worked with him and Wayne on other matters throughout the time. I've also, over the years, worked with, when Wayne was here, he had us come in and handle some personnel matters for him. So we've worked, and I personally worked with the New Hanover County Board of Education and school system for, you know, a good part of the 30-something years I've been doing this. One of the other things we've been handling for you in the short term has been bond forfeiture matters and DWI seizures and we've been handling those. We've had a really good working relationship with the Clerk's Office, the DA's office that's going seamlessly and really seems to be working well. So it's, we have enjoyed the work, I personally have enjoyed the work and enjoy working with the staff members that we work with on a fairly regular basis. So, it's, we have enjoyed the work. I personally have enjoyed the work and enjoy working with the staff members that we work with on a fairly regular basis.
With that, I think we'll just take your questions. All right, Ms. Crable and Ms. Walker, open it up to you again. Start us off.
Do you have questions?
Well, the question that I asked to, the first counsel was, you know, what kind of capacity do you build in us? And I think you've covered some of the things that you've already done with that. And so, I guess I'll ask you, will we keep the same dedicated person or are you guys going to rotate around to be our?
Yes, we're happy to keep you with Colin Shive with your same dedicated attorney. Unfortunately, he had to go argue before the Fourth Circuit tonight, and so, that's why he's not here today. But he's enjoyed working with you, I know, and is happy to continue to do so. And I do want to note, as far as internal capacity building, that, you know, in addition to doing that with our EC department, I can give you another example. One of the things that I've done with some districts with their personnel department is FMLA training. And what we actually do is put together a full notebook of forms that we've developed, form letters, and then sit down with payroll and HR and train the frontline staff on how to recognize when someone's asking for FMLA, what letters to send them. And these are the kind of things that we can provide without having to reinvent the wheel, without having to, I don't have to create that for you. I already have it. So, that's one benefit of working with our firm.
One other thing we did in that area is we provided, working with the finance officer, form contracts that can be used for services so that they can contract without having to send us contracts to review. And that saves them time and also saves the board a lot of money. We try to be as proactive in as many of those areas as we can.
I don't have any questions personally. I think Mr. Wildebor had a question.
Mr. Wildebor?
Yeah, again, I'll ask the same question. I asked the other group. What area of school systems do you currently serve or have served recently in southeastern, besides us, southeastern North Carolina?
So, as I'm just visualizing the map, we represent Duplin, Beaufort County, Proquemmons, Jones, Nash, Edgcombe. I'm kind of working my way around. Scotland.
We're special counsel for Brunswick.
Craven.
Craven. And, trying to think. That may be in the south, well, yeah, Scotland and Hough.
Okay, thank you.
All right, Ms. Justice?
Yes, it sounds like you have been working with our system for some time. We had a lawyer on staff previously. And I know that when he needed help because it wasn't his expertise or situations that arise. Were you the firm that was mainly contracted to work with him? Is that, I don't know if anybody up here would know that, maybe Mary? So, this is the firm that in the background was helping our previous legal services for how many years? I see people shaking their heads. Does anyone know for sure?
I know that he called us on occasion, but he may have called others too. I'm not sure.
Yeah, I certainly have worked with Wayne. But even before he was in-house counsel, you know, when he was outside counsel, he would, he had reached out to us. I mean, probably going back a good 25 years, I've worked with the New Hanover County Board of Education.
Okay, I see some people shaking their heads over here that might be able to answer this question because actually Ms. Varnum was the one that was shaking her head yes. Do you know how long, or if there were other legal groups that were advising our previous counsel besides Tharrington Smith? You just were shaking your head. I thought you might know.
I can just say for special education, I did not see on that. I don't know the timeline.
Okay, maybe Mary, Ms. Small might know? Yeah, I would just like to know the extent to which the previous legal counsel was working with Tharrington.
We'd have to research it. I think there were specific issues that maybe depended on if there was a special case or lawsuit. There might have been different firms that they worked with in the past. But we have all these records that we could go back if that's something the board was interested in.
I guess then we could look at that after this presentation, if you could. Thank you.
Sure. Any other questions from board members? All right, well, thank you both very much for coming this evening to present to the board during this work session. We appreciate the work that went into these presentations from both firms. And we will be discussing, and vote would be next month, I believe? All right, we'll be reviewing your information. Thank you all very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, moving along on the agenda. Our next item is this evening's invocation. It will be delivered by the Salt Fox Church Senior Pastor, Michael Mattis. And it will be remote, so if you could all please stand.
Hi, this is Michael Mattis. I'm the pastor of Salt Fox Church here in Wilmington. And I wanted to call and offer an opening prayer for the New Hanover County School Board. So, Father, I am so grateful for the board. I'm grateful that they serve. Lord, I'm grateful for their time, their expertise. And Father, I want to lift up Stephanie Adams as she chairs this, at this time and in this place and space. I want to lift up Nelson Bullier as he is part of it, and Judy Justice. I want to lift up Stephanie Crable and Hugh McManus. I want to lift up Pete Wildebor and Stephanie Walker. And Lord, I would pray for five things today. I pray for safety for this team, safety for them individually, safety for their families, extended families. Father, I'd also pray for wisdom, especially in the wake of the shooting that happened earlier this year in New Hanover and the Michigan shooting that's just taken place. Lord, give them great wisdom. Father, I pray that you'd give them unity of, in decision and unity of just orientation and direction. Father, I pray you'd give them courage to carry out those decisions. And Lord, I would ask lastly that you would give them great vision for our schools, for our students, for our families, for this county over which they preside. Lord, we're so grateful for them, and I pray a special blessing for them and their families. In the mighty name of Jesus, we pray. Amen. Thank you all for serving. We're so grateful.
Thank you, Pastor Mattis. If you'll remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. You may be seated. Next item on the agenda is the approval of the agenda. Are there any changes?
Madam Chair, I'd like to move that we combine the two call to audiences at one at the beginning.
All right, so the motion is to combine call to the audience for agenda items and non-agenda items into one. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Bullier. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All right, thank you. So, we will combine those.
Madam Chair, I have a second motion?
Yes, sir.
If I could. Thank you. I'd move that we move the masking vote to right after the call to audience.
That is, what number? Sorry. Oh, sorry. All right, moving the monthly mask vote to right after call to the audience.
Yes, ma'am.
All right, is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Bullier. Any discussion?
Yes.
Is it possible?
Hold on, let's Ms. Justice first.
Yeah, part of what we were doing was having the report from the Health Department first. That doesn't make sense to wait until after the report from the Health Department and then do the vote. There was a logic to it. I mean, just, that's what I thought we were planning. We're trying to be as efficient as possible and also knowledgeable. And that was the reason that we had the Health Department come out.
Would you like to amend that to do the COVID update first and then the state required mask vote?
Yeah. I'd be willing to amend that, yeah.
Okay, so the amendment is to do both, move both items, the COVID update and state required vote regarding masks in schools to below call to the audience or right after call to the audience. Is there a second?
Second.
All right, thank you, Mr. Bullier. Any discussion about that addition? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, E and F in under old business have been moved. Ms. Crable, did you?
Yeah, I was wondering, can we move it up before our closed session? So that we can, like, go ahead and approve, or we're approving the agenda, but move it up before we go to closed session so we can just handle that item, or is that not appropriate?
I don't know if that's appropriate. Right now, we've got a lot of items in closed session that we've got people waiting that we need to get to work with that we're already behind. All right. I believe we voted on the amendment. Now, do we need to vote then also to move?
The original one.
So, is there a motion to move E and F under old business to call to the audience? Yes, is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Walker. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? All right, that item is moved. Yes, Ms. Justice?
Yes, I would like to add a discussion concerning bonuses for our employees, something that people have been requesting for Christmas.
Under local salary schedules, that is included in that discussion?
This is for tonight, a discussion in action.
But the local salary schedules presentation includes some of that.
Right, but the bonus, the actual discussion of the bonus, I'm not going to, don't know if it's going to be included in that. I'm talking about a separate bonus from New Hanover County Schools. If that's included, then that's fine, but I want to make sure that that's included in there.
That conversation's there. All right, anything else? All right, all those, the motion now is to, is there a motion to approve the agenda as amended?
Move to approve as amended?
Thank you, Mr. Bullier, second. Thank you, Mr. Wildebor. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Agenda is approved. All right, next item on the agenda is a closed session from 5:30 to 6:30. Do I hear a motion?
Move to closed session.
Thank you, Mr. Bullier. Is there a second? Thank you, Mr. Wildebor. The recommendation is to enter into closed session pursuant to North Carolina General Statutes 143-318.11A1, 3, and 6, to consider personnel matters and to maintain the confidentiality of personnel records under North Carolina General Statutes 115C-319 and -321, to prevent the disclosure of student records rendered confidential under the Family Educational Rights and Privacy Act 20USC 1232G, to consult with the board's attorney to preserve attorney-client privileged information, including in the case captioned, John Doe v. New Hanover County Board of Education et al., New Hanover County Superior Court Case Number 19CVS 2745. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We are in closed session. Thank you very much.
It was a program named the International Backglow Program, hence IB, that was started in Europe by a group of educators, inventors, and thinkers who wanted to challenge how traditional curriculum kind of evolved beyond.
I think in the IB program, you sort of get a chance to begin almost like a college major early. So I love politics, and so I've been able to focus my studies, no matter what subject area it is, into politics in some way.
So the Marine Science Academy, we have extended the program to be all four years. We find that that supports our New Hanover County students the best. The Marine Science Academy is an 11th or 12th grade program, and we're finding that those students are really settled into their homeschools at that time.
It's just a really great program to be in. Um, you get to experience a lot of cool things and get some great opportunities, so I definitely would recommend it to anyone.
At the Career Readiness Academy, we are a small, non-traditional high school with a focus on personalization.
I got started with the Moseley Program about middle school, um, with the e-Academy side of things. By doing that, I've gotten pretty great opportunities, like the CCP program, getting early college work done with Cape Fear, and just really great internship at Liveo.
Well, Wax is a cooperative and innovative high school, and it is partnered, we partnered with Cape Fear Community College. Our students can graduate actually with a high school diploma and a two-year associate's degree, and they can also graduate with some type of credential, so they have many options.
The teachers there, they really do want you to succeed, so like they encourage you to answer questions and also ask your peers questions. You know, whenever I did come into school in ninth and 10th grade, it was like I was coming to a second family almost.
It's just a really great program to be in. Um, you get to experience a lot of cool things and get some great opportunities, so I definitely would recommend it to anyone.
At the Career Readiness Academy, we are a small, non-traditional high school with a focus on personalization.
I got started with the Moseley Program about, uh, middle school, um, with the e-Academy side of things. By doing that, I've gotten pretty great opportunities, like the CCP program, getting early college work done with Cape Fear, and just really great internship at Liveo.
Well, Wax is a cooperative and innovative high school, and it is partnered, we partnered with Cape Fear Community College. Our students can graduate actually with a high school diploma and a two-year associate's degree, and they can also graduate with some type of credential, so they have many options.
The teachers there, they really do want you to succeed, so like they encourage you to answer questions and also ask your peers questions. You know, whenever I did come into school in ninth and 10th grade, it was like I was coming to a second family almost.
The STEM program at Laney is primarily designed for students who have a strong interest in science, technology, engineering, and math. We offer five levels of Project Lead the Way engineering courses, including aerospace engineering, and we just added architectural engineering as well and civil engineering.
When going into high school, I was easily chose this school because of the STEM program. I've been able to play, um, high school sports at high level, been able to get a high education as well. It's been unlike anything I've seen at the county.
CTEC's the best place on earth. We are in our fifth year of operation. We are serving 240 children this year, up from 44 just five short years ago. We've lived through the pandemic and hurricanes and all the things and moves across buildings, and we're still standing and growing and getting better every day.
I needed that family-type connection to learn better, and you're really close with like all the teachers and the other students here. That was a really big thing for me.
The goal of the Lyceum program is interdisciplinary learning. It's getting our students involved across the subjects, um, learning both inside and outside of the building.
So when it comes to AP testing, it's easier because you have a whole year to master the content and you have teachers available to help you.
Isaac Bay Early College High School is part of the North Carolina Cool Operative Innovative High School. We give an opportunity for students to come and get fast-tracked into life after, um, high school.
It has honestly been a phenomenal program, both in regards to the curriculum and my peers. You end up just forming a really strong connection with your cohorts. It just, it makes you feel prepared to pursue anything you want to do.
This is NHCS Recap, where we look back at some of the top events from the week of November 8.
On Tuesday, the New Hanover County Board of Education held its regular board meeting. The board recognized numerous staff and students for their achievements and excellence, and discussed a staff climate survey as well as half-day Wednesdays starting in the month of December. No decision was made on either subject. The board voted to hold their monthly mask vote until after the Department of Health and Human Services made a decision on the county mask mandate. The board will hold a special meeting on Monday to vote.
Murray Middle School became an official Unified Champion National Banner School this week. They were recognized by the Special Olympics USA for meeting 10 standards of excellence in their work to develop an inclusive school. The Murray Falcons were only one of five schools in the state of North Carolina to receive this award for 2021.
We are proud to recognize and honor our veterans on Veterans Day. New Hanover County Schools employs a number of veterans, and we are pleased to be able to share the stories of some on our social media accounts. Thank you to all of our veterans, both staff and community members, for their service to our country and their dedication to the preservation of freedom.
That's it for NHCS Recap. Be sure to follow NHCS on social media and visit nhcs.net.
This is NHCS Recap, where we look back at some of the top events from the week of November 1.
Last weekend, New Hanover County Schools, with the invitation from the New Hanover County NAACP, attended a community engagement event for our families. We enjoy the collaboration, which allowed us to share our continued focus with the students and families we serve every day. NHCS looks forward to being welcomed and engaged in future events with the community.
On Monday, November 1, students and Mr. Rodriguez Hispanic Heritage Class presented on the Day of the Dead. Students and their families provided flowers, penderito, food, and painted their faces to honor the holiday with an authentic presentation.
Selected students from all traditional middle and high school orchestras were invited to the Mini Evans Arts Center for a two-day clinic learning and performing music with the aid of guest conductors Dr. Jim Waddelo of Meredith College and Corey Franklin of Chapel Hill Carrboro City Schools. Students performed a joint concert for the public on October 30.
That's it for NHCS Recap. Be sure to follow NHCS on social media and visit nhcs.net.
This is NHCS Recap, where we look back at some of the top events from the week of October 25.
This year, our Al County Choir Chorus Clinic invited students from all of the traditional middle and high schools to two separate locations to spend a day learning and performing music together as one district chorus family. High school students worked with Dr. Jonathan Seeger from Mount Olive College, and the middle school students worked with conductor Paul Flowers from Pitt County Schools.
Students at Ogden Elementary held an annual booster fund fundraiser. The students raised over $40,000. The funds will be used to help provide renovations and updates to the school's media center. It was a great fundraiser that paired school spirit with a dose of fitness.
At a special meeting held on Thursday, October 28, the New Hanover County Board of Education voted to make November 12 a wellness day for staff and students. This will be an undesignated workday.
Have you completed the New Hanover County Public Input Survey? Community members, parents, school employees, and students can share feedback and input through the survey. The survey is open through November 1.
Safety revolves around how the community treats each other, and if we go out and we work on this survey together, then we're going to be encouraging that community to grow. We're going to be encouraging safety among students and staff. We're going to be keeping people safe, and I don't understand why you wouldn't want to do that.
That's it for NHCS Recap. Be sure to follow NHCS on social media and visit nhcs.net. This is NHCS Recap, where we look back at some of the top events from the week of October 18.
CTEC, along with the Wilmington Cape Fear Home Builders Association, held a pumpkin carving with power tools event on October 18. This event was to celebrate the National Association of Home Builders Careers in Construction Month. It was a fun, hands-on experience that allowed CTEC students to learn to use different power tools while also learning about the construction industry as a whole.
Also on the 18th, Snipes Academy of Art and Design held a dedication ceremony for their outdoor classroom. This project was started before the pandemic but was just recently completed. Students and teachers are able to use the space to teach a variety of lessons as well as have lunch outside. The project was largely funded by the Landfall Foundation. Dr. Faust, along with other members of the senior staff and Board of Education, were all in attendance.
New Hanover County is launching a public input survey about school and community safety. New Hanover County is launching a public input survey about school and community safety, reporting incidents, communication, and community programs and resources. The survey is completely anonymous and will be open now through Monday, November 1st. It is intended to gather direct community-wide feedback to help inform the continued development of an actionable plan and investments. This is part of the county's initiative to improve school and community safety.
Wrightsville Beach Elementary School was named one of the 2021 U.S. Department of Education Green Ribbon Schools for their efforts to reduce their environmental impacts, teach students how to live sustainably, and be good stewards of the environment. Students from Wrightsville led tours for members of both the U.S. and North Carolina Departments of Education, demonstrating what their school does to promote these pillars. Members of the Board of Education, Dr. Faust, and other senior staff were all in attendance.
That's it for NHCS Recap. Be sure to follow NHCS on social media and visit nhcs.net. This is NHCS Recap, where we look back at some of the top events from the week of October 11th.
Students and staff over at Murray Middle School held a ribbon cutting event for the installation of their new solar panels. Murray has a pole-mounted 5KW system that was installed through an NC Green Power Grant with matching fundraising by the school. The other 110 kW-mounted system was purchased through Duke Energy Rebates from various projects over the years. The sixth-grade chorus band and orchestra also performed "Here Comes the Sun."
Our pre-K students were given tips on fire safety, informed about smoke alarms, and identified a meat spot at their homes. And in between their stop, drop, and roll routine, they even had a visit from New Hanover County Fire and Rescue.
October is Principal Appreciation Month. This month, we honored our principals at their monthly meeting with a video presentation. We recognize the hard work and dedication they put into their schools and students. We appreciate everything they do, not only this month, but year-round.
That's it for the NHCS Recap. Be sure to follow NHCS on social media and visit nhcs.net.
This is NHCS Recap, where we look back at some of the top events from the week of October 4th.
Students at Bradley Creek Elementary held their annual Walk Ride Your Bike to School event. The event that is celebrated nationally helps promote physical activity, teach safe pedestrian and bicycling skills, concern for the environment, and reduces traffic congestion and pollution, something we know our families appreciate.
The New Hanover County Board of Education held its regular meeting this week. They heard presentations from district leaders on the literacy campaign, budget and salary projections, and from Head Start. The board also extended the universal mask update for NHCS and was given an update on the vaccine and testing options within the district.
It's homecoming week over at Hager, and the Vikings are gearing up for their big game on Friday with Spirit Week. On Wednesday, they held their annual Powderpuff Football Game. Congratulations to the toughest-nails senior girls who defeated the juniors 24 to 6.
That's it for NHCS Recap. Be sure to follow NHCS on social media and visit nhcs.net. This is NHCS Recap, where we look back at some of the top events from the week of September 20th.
Schools across the district have been celebrating Start with Hello Week, a curriculum and event through Sandy Hook Promise that teaches ending social isolation through empathy and reaching out to your peers. This week, we saw heartwarming scenes from Myrtle Grove Middle School where students wrote encouraging messages to each other. Every student deserves to feel a sense of belonging in our schools, and we'd love to see our educators and students working toward that goal.
Wrightsville Elementary School held a family night escape room this week. The Cool Cats school mascot went missing, and Miss Overby enlisted students and families to attend the family night to help find him using escape room strategies and hints hidden throughout the school.
From teachers to tutors, HVAC repair experts to plumbers, treasurers to cooks, New Hanover County Schools is hiring with flexible hours, competitive pay, and great benefits. You can start here and grow anywhere. Join us for a career fair this weekend to get an on-the-spot interview.
That's it for NHCS Recap. Be sure to follow NHCS on social media and visit nhcs.net.
This is NHCS Recap, where we look back at some of the top events from the week of September 13th.
Ms. Moore, AIG teacher at Porter's Neck Elementary, has coordinated a leadership opportunity for upper grades called Safety Patrol. Fifth graders are taking on roles in the morning like greeting students, putting up the flag, doing the announcements, and more.
September is Suicide Prevention Month. Students and adults alike experience feelings of stress, anxiousness, disappointment, and sadness. Sometimes our emotions become more than we can handle. It's okay to not feel okay. Your emotions are valid. If you or one of your friends are experiencing symptoms of anxiety or depression, know that you do not have to go it alone. Share your concerns anonymously through the Say Something app or tell a trusted adult or school staff member. Remember that you are not alone.
This week, district leaders gathered for their monthly principals meeting. Principals heard updates on career and technical education regarding pathways and viewed a presentation on fidelity in education where they were treated to a sneak peek at the district's new literacy newsletter, Read, Lead, Succeed. There was also a presentation on Gang Task Force and the SRO MOU training.
Hispanic Heritage Month began this week. Over the next four weeks, schools throughout the district will recognize the achievements and contributions to Hispanic heritage and culture. Wrightsville Elementary Cool Cats wasted no time in starting their celebrations. Students and staff have been showing their Hispanic heritage pride through their wardrobe and accessories.
That's it for the NHCS Recap. Be sure to follow NHCS on social media and visit nhcs.net. This is NHCS Recap, where we look back at some of the top events from the week of September 6th.
The New Hanover County Board of Education held its regular meeting this week. They heard presentations from district leaders on the Career and Technical Education Audit, Literacy and Math Framework, as well as after-school tutoring, enrichment, and acceleration programs. The board also extended the universal mask update for New Hanover County Schools and provided information on their joint effort with New Hanover County Commissioners to work on teacher recruitment and retention incentives.
Having an open line of communication with our families is one of our top priorities as a district, and we're excited to be adding texting to the way we reach our families. Receiving texts from New Hanover County Schools is easy. Just text YES to 67587 to opt in.
Our community has come together over the last week and a half in support of our staff, students, and families at New Hanover High School. From elementary Bulldogs to crosstown rival Vikings, New Hanover County Schools has stood in solidarity with the Wildcats. The orchestra and chorus students at Trask Middle School even put together their rendition of "Lenomi" for the Hanover family.
Twenty years ago, our nation was struck with the tragic events of September 11th. For those of us old enough to remember, we can tell you exactly where we were when the towers were struck. We can recall the horrifying footage that played out on our televisions that morning and the days to come. We grieve with those lives lost, and we hold an esteem the countless first responders who raced toward the chaos, and we honor the men and women in our military forces who served to protect our nation near and far. This morning at New Hanover High School, the JROTC held an observance of remembrance for all of the lives impacted by the events of 9/11.
That's it for NHCS Recap. Be sure to follow NHCS on social media and visit nhcs.net.
This is NHCS Recap, where we look back at some of the top events from the week of August 30th.
On Monday, August 30th, a physical altercation occurred at New Hanover High School. During the altercation, a student fired shots, striking another student in the leg and hand. In the days after the incident, New Hanover County Schools has worked to provide support and resources to the Wildcat family. The district's crisis team have made themselves readily available and have also provided outside resources to students and staff through Troium Health and the Wilmington Health Access for Teens, or WHAT clinic. We encourage our students to talk to a trusted adult, teacher, or counselor if you are in need of additional support.
As a result of the incident, New Hanover County Board of Education members with the New Hanover County Commissioners held a joint special meeting Friday, September 3rd to discuss how to ensure the safety of students and staff at all New Hanover County school facilities. This joint meeting was held at the Board of Education Center where community leaders were able to share what safety measures they would like to see implemented going forward.
Today, the stakeholders at this table have an opportunity to discuss lessons learned, ask questions, and share ideas for solutions and next steps. We need to do our homework, research, and develop a well-thought-out plan to prevent violence in our campuses.
Three years ago, Murray Middle School's Unified Falcons made a commitment to work to build a more inclusive school. In that time, the Falcons have participated in Special Olympics Unified Sports, where students with and without disabilities train and compete as teammates, foster inclusive youth leadership, and maintain whole-school engagement. Murray is a national model school of inclusion and was awarded status as a Unified Champion National Banner School.
Some of our youngest learners headed to the classroom for the first time this week. Students at Howe Johnson Mosley and College Road Early Childhood Center had staggered enrollment for the first half of the week and rounded out the week on Thursday and Friday with full days.
That's it for NHCS Recap. Be sure to follow NHCS on social media and visit nhcs.net. This is NHCS Recap, where we look back at some of the top events from the week of August 23rd.
This week, New Hanover County Traditional Schools K-12 students headed back to the classroom for full-time in-person learning. After 18 months of remote and hybrid instruction, teachers were so excited to welcome back familiar and new faces to the classroom.
The promise is to make sure that, you know, we provide a safe, rigorous education, and that's what we're going to do.
Though our K-12 students may there come back this week, our pre-K students will return on Monday, August 30th. This week, our youngest learners attended an open house where they met with teachers and toured classrooms. The district was able to fill over 800 spots in early childhood education thanks to a joint effort from the New Hanover County Commissioners and our New Hanover County Board of Education.
And we couldn't kick off the 2021-2022 traditional school year without recognizing our child nutrition staff and bus drivers. The Communication and Outreach Division provided donuts to both departments. So we can officially say we started the year off with NHCS running on Dunkin'.
That's it for NHCS Recap. Be sure to follow NHCS on social media and visit nhcs.net. This week, eighth graders across the district learned about our high school specialty programs and non-traditional high schools. The presentations included a brief overview of each program, breakout sessions hosted by each high school's lead teacher, and a Q&amp;A session. The application for all signature programs opens today at 4:00 PM. It will remain open until January 21st. If your student is interested in applying, please visit the Signature Programs website.
With all of the writing and the research and critical thinking that we do, I think it's really prepared me well for the college curriculum that I'll be seeing in the future. I've really enjoyed the structure. I like having a smaller group that I can really connect with, and we can all help each other with things that we have questions on. And your teachers also know you really well because they all have you for a number of years.
Don't be nervous because nobody's going to judge you here because we all like to learn. We all like to just, we all just want to get to like the same objective, but we can all do it in a different way. And just don't be nervous when, if you want to come to Ms. Allen and ask her questions or ask one of the STEM leaders.
There's so many programs and like classes and helps, and it helps you like get to know what you like best and helps you kind of prepare and get into like that kind of mindset and feel of what it actually like is to like be part of. A really good form program.
There is an application for each program. It is a common application, so one application for every program. Students can choose to select as few or as many programs as they would like to apply to, and the application will be available until the end of January.
That's it for NHCS Recap. Be sure to visit NHCS on social media and on nhcs.net.
So IB dates back to the 1960s. It was a program named the International Backglow Program, that's IB, that was started in Europe by a group of educators, inventors, and thinkers who wanted to challenge how traditional curriculum kind of evolved beyond.
I think in the IB program, you sort of get a chance to begin almost like a college major early. So I love politics, and so I've been able to focus my studies, no matter what subject area it is, into politics in some way.
So the Marine Science Academy, we have extended the program to be all four years. We find that that supports our New Hanover County students the best. The Marine Science Academy is an 11th or 12th grade program, and we're finding that those students are really settled into their homeschools at that time.
It's just a really great program to be in. You get to experience a lot of cool things and get some great opportunities. So I definitely would recommend it to anyone.
At the Career Readiness Academy, we are a small, non-traditional high school with a focus on personalization.
I got started with the Mosley program about middle school with the eAcademy side of things. By doing that, I've gotten pretty great opportunities like the CCP program, getting early college work done with Cape Fear, and just really great internship at Liveo.
Well, Wax is a cooperative and innovative high school, and it is partnered, we partnered with Cape Fear Community College. Our students can graduate actually with a high school diploma and a two-year associate's degree, and they can also graduate with some type of credential. So they have many options.
The teachers there, they really do want you to succeed. So like they encourage you to answer questions and also ask your peers questions. You know, whenever I did come into school in ninth You know, whenever I did come into school in ninth and 10th grade, it was like I was coming to a second family almost.
The STEM program at Laney is primarily designed for students who have a strong interest in science, technology, engineering, and math. We offer five levels of project lead-the-way engineering courses, including aerospace engineering, and we just added architectural engineering as well and civil engineering.
When going into high school, I was easily chose this school because of the STEM program. I've been able to play high school sports at high level, been able to get a high education as well. It's been unlike anything I've seen after in county.
CTEC's the best place on earth. We are in our fifth year of operation. We are serving 240 children this year, up from 44 just five short years ago. We've lived through the pandemic and hurricanes and all the things and moves across buildings, and we're still standing and growing and getting better every day.
I needed that family-type connection to learn better, and you're really close with like all the teachers and the other students here. That was a really big thing for me.
The goal of the Lyceum program is interdisciplinary learning. It's getting our students involved across the subjects, learning both inside and outside of the building.
So when it comes to AP testing, it's easier because you have a whole year to master the content and you have teachers available to help you.
Isaac Bear Early College High School is part of the North Carolina Cool Operative Innovative High School. We give an opportunity for students to come and get fast-tracked into life after high school.
It has honestly been a phenomenal program, both in regards to the curriculum and my peers. You end up just forming a really strong connection with your cohorts. It just, it makes you feel prepared to pursue anything you wanna do.
This is NHCS Recap, where we look back at some of the top events from the week of November 8th.
On Tuesday, the New Hanover County Board of Education held its regular board meeting. The board recognized numerous staff and students for their achievements and excellence and discussed a staff climate survey as well as half-day Wednesdays starting in the month of December. No decision was made on either subject. The board voted to hold their monthly mask vote until after the Department of Health and Human Services made a decision on the county mask mandate. The board will hold a special meeting on Monday to vote.
Murray Middle School became an official Unified Champion National Banner School this week. They were recognized by the Special Olympics USA for meeting 10 standards of excellence in their work to develop an inclusive school. The Murray Falcons were only one of five schools in the state of North Carolina to receive this award for 2021.
We are proud to recognize and honor our veterans on Veterans Day. New Hanover County Schools employs a number of veterans, and we are pleased to be able to share the stories of some on our social media accounts. Thank you to all of our veterans, both staff and community members, for their service to our country and their dedication to the preservation of freedom.
That's it for NHCS Recap. Be sure to follow NHCS on social media and visit nhcs.net.
Welcome back. We are going to continue with our meeting. Thank you for your patience while we were in closed session. We welcomed a few people since we left, and so just a couple comments to reiterate. A reminder that masks are currently still required in this building as a result of the New Hanover County Schools district-wide mask mandate. Please keep your mask above your nose and under your chin. If you are signed up to speak during call to the audience, you may remove your mask when you reach the microphone to present to the board. If you're unable to wear a mask, a reminder that this meeting is being streamed on the New Hanover County Schools YouTube page and can be viewed in real time. Thank you in advance for adhering to this requirement. This evening, we have students present, and we're committed to creating safe and welcoming spaces for them and our community as a whole. Also, as we move forward, I understand that there are many issues we are facing as a school system, and there are passionate people on all sides of them. We thank you for your engagement, and we encourage you to continue to share your thoughts and comments through emails and during the opportunity of call to the audience at that portion of this meeting. At other times though, we ask that you mind your voices, actions, and we request that you show respect to your fellow meeting attendees. It is the season of goodwill after all. We are focused as a board on completing the governance work necessary for our students, staff, and schools. Disruptions will not be tolerated. Per General Statute 143-318-17, "A person who willfully interrupts, disturbs, or disrupts an official meeting and who upon being directed to leave the meeting by the presiding officer willfully refuses to leave the meeting is guilty of a Class II misdemeanor." Please be mindful of your behavior. Our children are watching. All right, next item on the agenda is the approval of the minutes from the special meeting on 11/15/2021. Do I hear a motion?
No move.
Thank you, Ms. Justice. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Bullier. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Minutes are approved. Thank you. Next item on the agenda, the best part of the evening. Mr. Smith, if you would mind coming up to the microphone for our recognitions and achievements.
Board members, Dr. Phallus, colleagues, and guests. First up this evening, we have Lincoln Woodell. If you could come on up, Lincoln. A member of the Lumbee Tribe and a powwow dancer since the age of four. Actually, high school freshman Lincoln Woodell was invited to perform at a luncheon hosted by the first lady at the event, by the first lady, at the event in Washington, DC. He was paired with a female fancy shawl dancer from Colorado. For dignitaries and leaders from around the country, the pair brought the event theme of Touch the Earth to life. When asked about being honored in Washington, DC, Lincoln had the following to say. "It meant I was representing everybody back home that can't represent themselves. They don't have a voice, so I can use my voice to represent them." Next up, we have Ella King and Nina Noble. Each year, the historic Wilmington Foundation hosts the Impact of Preservation High School Speech Contest for juniors and seniors across New Hanover, Pender, and Brunswick Counties. This year, students presented on the topic, "Why Does Preservation Matter?", speeches were five minutes and participants could choose from nine historic sites. This year, we're pleased to announce that New Hanover County Schools does not have just one, but two winners. At this time, please join me in congratulating Isaac Bear Early College High School junior Ella King and senior Nina Noble, who both tied for second place. And Ella and Nina both earned $500 scholarships. Next up, Board Member Ms. Stephanie Walker. Congratulations to Board Member Stephanie Walker. Ms. Walker has been accepted into the Advanced Leadership Core Program through UNC School of Government for the 2022 Cohort. This prestigious Residential Leadership Development Program for local elected officials works to improve and inspire one's ability to work toward a shared vision, develop insight into what it means to govern in the public sector, as well as being able to adapt to different communication styles for better relationships. We congratulate Ms. Walker on this wonderful opportunity. And finally, for the second year in a row, the New Hanover High School soccer team has played in the state championship game. Actually, I'm gonna ask you guys, come on up to the stage, get ready for the photo. However... However, however, unlike last year, we're thrilled to be welcoming the team up as your North Carolina High School Athletic Association Foray Soccer Champions. The team defeated Huff High School to capture another banner for the Wildcat community. We're pleased to have with us here tonight Principal Philip Sutton, Head Wildcat Soccer Coach Rennie, and his 2021 team. Now, I've timed this, it takes about 32 seconds to get through the names, so while they do photos, I'm gonna get your names, and if I don't get it right, your parents can email me, okay? I'm gonna try it. Here we go. All right. Johnny DePaz, H.D. Anderson, Camille Vivas-Mendez, Andy McCabe, Preston Leon, Shay Payne, Hayes Matthews, Holt Rogers, Luis Miranda, Charlie Letson, Aiden Payne, John Frack, Elijah Lopez de Silva, David Godden, Oliver Bain, Jonathan Leon Dittier, Max Kerrigan, Luke Carter, Liam Davis, Jacoby Burrows, Walker Hicks, Henry Boyd, Owen Hayworth, Brody Frank, Micah Hall, Sam Lancaster, Angel Barrera, Anthony Reyes Maron, Rowan Leon, Christian Mullins, Jacob Schart, and Chris Sales. Congratulations, team.
All right, congratulations, Wildcats, and all of our recognitions. You are making New Hanover County Schools proud. Well done, students. All right. Thank you, Mr. Smith. All right, I know we had those seats originally reserved for our guests, so if you'd like to fill in, please feel free. Now that the students are leaving, we have those seats available. All right, next item up is call to the audience. As we've already said, there was a motion to combine both agenda and non-agenda items for call to the audience. Before we get started, just a couple comments. Thank you for signing up to share your comments and concerns with the board. We welcome the engagement from our community. I'm gonna call two names at a time to keep the flow of participation moving. If you are next in line to speak, you may wait in the middle of the room while the person ahead of you speaks. You may remove your mask when you arrive at the microphone to speak, but please remember to replace it back on your face before you head back to your seat. Please refrain from using profanity. Disruptions by any persons or persons at a public meeting will be subject to action, including removal from the meeting. All right. First up for our call to the audience, we have Peter Rawich, and he will be followed by Ms. Natasha Too.
Sometimes they whisper, sometimes they shout, sometimes they're still or they will wiggle about. They may obey or be out of control. They're just four, five, six, and seven years old. You gotta love our children. Love our children. You've got to love our children and keep them learning in school. They've been suspended when they show disrespect. They've been suspended when they throw an object. They've been kicked out when they don't do as they're told. They act like four, five, six, and seven years old. You gotta love our children. Love our children. You've got to love our children and keep them learning in school. Out of school may be the last resort, but the kids don't get help. There's no support. When they miss their lessons and get left behind, they're thrown into the school to prison pipeline. What's all this talk about equity? If you won't change your policy. Stop the Stalin and the rigmarole. They're only four, five, six, and seven years old. You gotta love our children. Love our children. You've got to love our children and keep them learning in school.
Ladies and gentlemen, the signs need to stay below height. It cannot impede vision. Thank you. So Ms. Natasha Too, followed by Mark Dees. Thank you.
Hello, I'm here to speak tonight and support our parent choice and once again remind all of you that federal law products issued with an emergency use authorization are considered experimental and thereby must be able to be refused without penalty. This includes masks. It has been proven repeatedly that mask wearing does not stop the transmission of the virus. In fact, the continuous mask wearing is harmful to our children. Not to mention that our kids have a statistical 0% chance of dying from this disease, if they were even to contract it. This is madness. As I have previously stated, this mask mandate is not about public health, it's about control and greed. I would like to thank Pete, and I would like to thank Nelson for voting and respecting parental rights by voting against the continuation of mask mandate. However, I was not surprised to learn that the rest of you voted to elect to keep it. Consider that a very socialist move, not respecting the United States Constitution. However, I was surprised to see a very recent picture of 13 of your administrators, maskless, attending a fall symposium posted on their Facebook page the same day that you elected to keep the mask on our kids. That did surprise me a bit. Do y'all need reminding of the Gospel of St. Luke, Chapter 17, Verse 2? "It would be better for him to have a millstone hung around his neck and to be thrown into the sea than to call..." the sea than to cause one of these little ones to stumble. Your unlawful mandate is a violation of the Nuremberg Code and a violation of the United States Constitution. If this mandate is not discontinued immediately, we are prepared to sue in federal district court under Title 42-1983 Civil Action for Deprivation of Rights Under Color of Law in both your official and personal capacities. We will seek compensatory and punitive damages. Each of you would do well to remember the landmark Supreme Court case of 1803, Marbury v. Madison, in which rules, "All laws repugnant to the Constitution are null and void."
Mr. Dees, followed by Veronica McLaurin Brown.
Hello. My name is Mark Dees, and I'm a veteran teacher of 17 years in North Carolina schools. And I am speaking as a parent about my daughter's former school, although I can honestly say that we are starting to have some of these same issues at my school as well. We recently removed our daughter from Forest Hills because of the trauma that our child endured there. A few days into the school year, we noticed a huge change in her demeanor. She cried often and discussed how much she hated school on a regular basis. She mentioned stories about the chaotic classroom and the school environment, and even described when her 15-year veteran teacher cried in the middle of class and told his kids he was not coming back because he couldn't take teaching anymore. We found some of her stories hard to believe. In fact, they seemed ridiculous. Her teachers later confirmed that she was, quote, "100% accurate." They were equally frustrated and overwhelmed by the situation because they do not have the necessary resources or staff to accommodate the needs of their students. Other students are not as lucky as my daughter because they may not have the same options we do. It is up to the school board to make their education a priority. If you do not respond both immediately and effectively, you will continue to lose the most valuable resources that you can offer any of your students, good and dedicated classroom teachers and teacher assistants. Even classroom educators have their breaking points, and we are there. I am among the many teachers strongly contemplating resignation myself. What will you do when you have no one to work? It is time for the school board to use the budget we seem to be saving for a rainy day because we are actually in the midst of a monsoon season in our schools now. Teacher assistants and substitutes are saints and a necessity. Let's substantially fix their pay. It is a joke. Support your teachers. Ask for their input because no one knows more about classroom instruction than a veteran teacher actually in the trenches right now. Stop overloading them with work outside of their regular classroom instructional assignments to make up for a lack of resources and manpower created by low wages and little respect. Act fast. Thank you.
Every board member signed the Code of Ethics Statements required by Policy 2120.
The last sentence of the Policy 2120 states that your first and greatest concern must be the educational welfare of students. Maintaining a policy that throws four to seven, our pre-K to second grade students out of school for insubordination shows no concern for their welfare and is unethical. Maintaining a policy that causes students to lose valuable instruction time shows no concern for their educational welfare and is unethical. Maintaining a policy that hurts students rather than heals them shows no concern for their welfare and is unethical. Honor your commitment to your Code of Ethics. Show that you care about the educational welfare of our four, five, six, and seven-year-old children. Add the statement to the current discipline policy. Suspensions will not be used as a consequence for four, five, six, and seven-year-old students except for weapons, drugs, or serious bodily harm, and provide the schools with the resources that they need. Our community is flush with cash. Advocate for more funds from the county commissioners. Take a hard look at the current school budget. Decide what we can do, not what we can't do. A quote by Mrs. Walker from the November meeting. Stop the excuses. Stop the excuses. Please stop the excuses. Change the discipline policy. Keep our babies learning in school.
Donna Gargat, followed by Jacqueline Delesio. Again, Jacqueline Delesio, next.
Frederick Douglass said, "It's easier to build strong..." It isn't easier to build strong children than to repair broken men. The school board may be using all the right terminology, but there is not enough action to take... Excuse me. Not enough action to back up your words. I'm not sure you have really heard our teachers, parents, and support staff. Besides losing valuable teachers, we are losing our most vulnerable kids largely due to perspectives that are outdated and disciplinary practices that are punitive. With each detention, suspension, restraint, seclusion, and arrest at the school, there are children who aren't getting the help they need and are being pushed away from caregivers who could instead be helping them. The cost to all of us is profound. Overwhelmed, discouraged educators, frustrated, desperate parents, disenfranchised, marginalized, alienated kids, a pipeline to prison. This isn't just a coined phrase, but reality. You know what else is linked to that prison pipeline? Low literacy rates. According to 2000 Study in Texas, approximately 80% of prison inmates are reported to be functionally illiterate. I've listened to several parents cry about how unsupported their EC students are in our school system. They are beyond frustrated, some to the point of pulling their children out. They think there's no place for their child. Is there? Somehow, I am still hopeful that the board will move to action to help our students get their social, emotional needs met and their educational needs met with urgency. You have the power to change the course. We have community members here looking to partner and support the schools. Let's stop working against each other and put the unity back in community to support all the children in New Hanover County.
Thank you. Your time is up. After Jacqueline Delesio is Alicia, I think, Ogundel.
Good evening, Dr. Faust and members of the school board. My name is Jacqueline Delesio, and I am a special education teacher at Winter Park Elementary. I'm here tonight to stand up for my TAs, TAs throughout the county, and all classified staff members. These hardworking and dedicated individuals deserve a right to a living wage of $17 an hour. While the proposed salary increases and bonuses are a step in the right direction, they still do not provide enough compensation for these individuals. People who have been supporting students much longer than I have will be making less than $30,000 per year in a county where the price of living is ever increasing. I am doubtful that you all could support yourselves and your families on such a salary. I cannot do my job without my TAs. The IEP services of my students would be lacking without them. They are the backbone of my classroom and are often the ones holding it together when I am involved in meetings, professional development, and department chair duties. They forge strong relationships with our students and make them feel safe and, most importantly, loved. And they are just one of the faces of a classified staff member that my students see each day. I applaud your efforts to begin taking action to give these members of New Hanover County Schools' staff the wage that they deserve. However, in order to retain the talent we have and to recruit more highly qualified individuals to our county, you must be able to go above and beyond just what is right. I implore you to compensate classified staff members in a manner that is deserving of their hard work and dedication at $17 an hour with commensurate pay for years of experience. Only then can we, as New Hanover County, show a unified front in competitive and livable wages for all employees. Thank you for your time.
Alicia Ogundel, followed by Sandy Isles.
My name is Alicia Ogundel.
Sorry.
Just correction. Okay. I'm here tonight to speak about the Policy 2120, Item 2, under Specific Board Meeting Members' Commitments. States, "Remember always that the board member's first and greatest concern must be the educational welfare of the students attending the public schools." I think you may have forgotten that. When you allow four and five, six, and seven-year-olds to be suspended for reasons other than guns, drugs, or violent assaults, you are showing that you have no concern for their educational welfare. Keep our children in school. Their mistakes are teachable moments. Help them learn. Take care of their social and emotional needs. Change Students' Behavior Policy 4300. You know suspensions harm children. It's time to love our children, love on them and show them instead of throwing them away. So hopefully, my concerns don't fall on deaf ears when it comes to keeping our children in school, and there's a lot of work we need to be done, and we are crying out from the community that you hear and listen to, the parents, the teachers, the teachers and assistants. All of us are crying out to you to make a change with our students. And like you just mentioned today, our students are watching us. So it's in our best interest to do what's best for them, and that's what our pleas are here today. So again, I would reiterate, let's love on our children and, you know, be a factor of what y'all can do. Y'all can make changes, and this is not the first time this has come up. But I really would like to y'all to examine your own selves because these are our children and our concerns, and we are tired of seeing them overlooked. So that is what I brought to you today. Thank you.
Sandy Isles, followed by Melissa Mason.
In honor of the holidays, I've created a festive paper doll garland to represent the 123 students who were secluded in North Carolina in 2017, as reported by the Office of Civil Rights. The 59 red figures represent the children from New Hanover County Schools, and they make up 48% of all students secluded in the entire state. Now, we can make excuses or dismiss this data, or we can acknowledge the 59 children who were involuntarily locked in padded rooms 486 times that year. In the following year, children were locked in rooms 908 times. We almost doubled our seclusions in one year. We can also blame children for misbehaving or blame parents or teachers, but blame does not solve problems. The fact is, and I know every staff member in this room will agree, seclusion and restraint is dangerous. Teachers risk serious injury every time they restrain and seclude a child. Our practices hurt teachers. So I ask, why are we putting staff and students in danger? I doubt... I'm sorry, I missed a page. Students also face serious risk of injury or even death. Not only is it extremely dangerous, but it does not fix or prevent behaviors. 98% of seclusions involve children with disabilities, and their IEP is supposed to support their behavior needs. But if we are repeatedly secluding a child, it means their IEP is not working, and we are not preventing behaviors. It also means we are likely stopped using this as a last resort and instead rely on it as a dangerous behavior management tool. We must shift from crisis management to crisis prevention. So I ask, why are we putting staff and students in danger? I doubt our teachers wanted to lock these 59 children in rooms because it's dangerous and traumatizing to do so. You must review the data and reevaluate our practices because your failure to do so is putting our students and staff in danger by blocking them from safe, effective tools they desperately need to educate our children. Thank you.
And Melissa Mason will be followed by Josephine Barn... Oh, sorry. No, sorry. Patrice Tierney.
Good evening. I would like to talk about honesty and integrity. Honesty is defined as being free of deceit or untruthfulness, and integrity is defined as having strong moral principles. As a Board of Education and Administration in a county of 43 schools, you are held to a higher standard. Because you are in these positions, you are called upon to be role models for our students and our community as a whole. The policies you make and how they are implemented all reflect your character. The contract with Sofic Solutions for the Equity Audit, as well as the implementation of it, have been shrouded in secrecy and deception. The student event involving this company that occurred on November 19th was not on the calendars. Why? If this countywide initiative is such a priority, why is an event such as this kept hidden? Why are these students who are involved in Equity, Diversity, and Inclusion Committees and who are selected to attend this event told to keep quiet regarding the topics they're discussing? How were these students selected? And when asked, because I have asked, the individuals responsible can give no answers. The Title IX surveys have also been problematic. When parents inquired to see these, they were given samples. In addition, many parents were unaware that they could opt their kids out, with some students in some schools being told by their teachers that they were mandatory. Clear communication and information regarding this should be made available. This type of survey should be a parent's choice and should require parental consent rather than implied consent. Our community deserves a board and an administration that is open and honest. Parents, as well as our community members, have the right to know what is happening with students while they attend school and during school functions, and our students deserve role models that display honesty and integrity.
And after Patrice Tierney, Josephine Barnhart.
My name is Patrice Tierney Prim. I am a classified staff member. I have a master's degree in reading recovery. I have been a teacher for close to 20 years, and now I am a proud TA at New Hanover High School. I decided to take a job as a TA just to keep doing what I love, but I certainly did not realize that I would be doing just as much work as when I was teaching for a salary I can't survive on. With my current salary, I can't afford basic necessities. I go to food pantries just to make ends meet. I have many bills that go unpaid. Most of us classified staff members do. It wasn't easy being a teacher, but as a classified staff member, I am so much more overlooked and undervalued by the district. The teachers received a higher COVID bonus, a higher supplement, and while, of course, they deserve more, so do we. Are our lives worth less? Do our work... Does our work not matter? I've been at the front of the classroom as a teacher, and I've filled in every gap and need as they arise around the school as a TA. And I can assure you, we are essential. Our work is important, and our students depend on us. After years of upheaval and stress, you need to invest in us and all classified workers so that our students and schools can thrive. We know the county has $85 million in COVID relief funds and $350 million from the sale of the hospital that the county can use for school safety. Retaining and recruiting highly qualified educators so that students are known and supported and safe is an issue of school safety. We've heard you say you can't use the COVID relief funds on raises. Tell us where all that money is going then, if not to solve this staffing and wage crisis. Because the raises you are voting on tonight are not enough, we still won't be able to live off what we take home each month. I will still have to go to food pantries. More educators will be forced to leave our schools, and we cannot afford that. Please hear us when we say we need a starting minimum salary of $17 an hour. We need you to do everything you can to invest in your staff members.
Ms. Tierney, I'm sorry. Your time is up.
This whole district is counting on you.
Ms. Tierney, thank you. And following Ms. Barnhart, Ms. Loretta Stackhouse.
Good evening. Tonight, I come to talk to you about intentional transparency in regards to how we are implementing equity in our district. Our school district is living in alternative realities, one in which the idea of something great is presented, and then how it falls on our staff and what our implementation of it is. Last year, the board started having conversations about a better school district, and prior to starting a relationship with Sofic Solutions and K-Pair Collective, the goal of equity and helping all was the conversation. We can all agree upon that. But how that was going to be implemented and the process of what was going to happen was not laid out and clear. That is our job to do as a district. But Sofic Solutions, what they do is they create qualitative reasoning to quantitative data, meaning they provide words why our data is the way it is. On Friday, November 19th, the district hosted an equity summit in which secondary school equity teams were chosen to come to a field trip here to be in front of Sofic Solutions and discuss the ideas and the path forward of what equitable positive change looked like for our district. Ms. Dr. Faust, you extended the contract with Sofic Solutions and also promoted Dr. Smith to be the EDI Coordinator with discretionary funds. As you can tell, we have some needs for funding elsewhere as well. But there was no itinerary, no district outlet publicized this event, which I found odd because this is a district initiative. If this is what our goal is, then we need to be clearly expressed... If this is what our goal is, then we need to be clearly expressing it to our community and to our staff dialogue. I started thinking about, how have we implemented equity? The one thing that I can think of is October 2020, we implemented equity and lowered the grading standards to be a 50 to 100. Now let me stand here and tell you, as a mom of three minority children, I am insulted by the insinuation that minority children cannot achieve greatness because quite frankly, that's untrue. All children can achieve academic excellence and we should not be bringing them down in the name of equity. So as we move forward, what I want to see is intentional transparency in how we're implementing that. Thank you.
Loretta Stackhouse, followed by Ms. Barbara Anderson.
The learning process, development, and foundation building of sound, basic education begins during the first seven years of life. Suspensions interrupt the learning process, causing the child to fall behind his or her age group. This is evidenced by lower reading and math scores. Once this happens, catching up is difficult. Some children repeat grades, some never catch up, some drop out and never graduate from high school. Suspending four, five, six, and seven year old children, interrupting the learning process, foundation building, needs to stop. The Board can do this by changing the policy now. Four children died last week when those with the authority neglected to act. How would your life be if you had started with the foundation that had been weakened by interruptions in your learning process? Thank you.
Barbara Anderson, followed by Carrie Miller.
Good evening. I'm sharing a reflection from a friend and a fellow teacher in the elementary school in New Hanover County. And this is what she had to say. To shine a light on how badly teachers are treated, in the last 24 hours, I talked to nine teachers who are ready to leave teaching as soon as they can get a new job outside of education, from a first year teacher to 22-year teacher. Many of them cry every night. It's not that they don't love the kids or what they do. It's the pay, all the required testing with no assistance, not enough employees to support the staff, ungodly amounts of training, and a sheer lack of respect throughout the education system. And then we have to regularly deal with the social stigma that we are ungrateful, that we are already overpaid, that if we don't like the system, then we need to just get out of it, and that we are blamed as inadequate when every student doesn't succeed. It's exhausting, it's stressful, and it's heartbreaking that even a mass exodus of teachers doesn't seem to faze our administration on any level. They just don't care, is what she said. I would add that as of this morning, there were 156 job openings, 42 certified staff, 18 teacher assistants, mostly in the elementary level. The district is not flush with staff as it has been put out to the public, except maybe at central office. How can you be overstaffed when you can't even keep the minimum staff levels and maintain them? Forty-two certified classroom teachers are out in this district. And at this rate, I really don't know if you're going to have enough staff to even do a climate survey when you finally get around to getting one out. Teacher assistants are being pulled to cover classes because there aren't enough subs. Teachers are leaving in droves. They're getting out of the profession. Even my niece, who was the last one of the state to get a scholarship for Teachers Fellows, is thinking about quitting. She's had enough. She can make more as a waitress and tips. Please take care of our teachers. We're losing them.
Carrie Miller, followed by Denise Younon.
Good evening. I'm Carrie Miller. I am a parent of a local kindergartner, I'm sorry, a kindergartner, and I'm also a co-founder of a local nonprofit that serves families here in New Hanover County. I'm here today to speak about the low wages that our teacher assistants and all classified staff across the district are paid. They are not being paid a livable wage. This is a huge problem for me because I have a child living with disabilities and mobility issues. My child needs a teacher assistant to thrive and be successful. By not giving our teacher assistants a livable wage, you are putting at risk the success of my child and every other child who needs extra support. With a shortage of all staff members and with more considering leaving the profession because of how difficult and underpaid it is, my child will continue to face instability and inconsistency. More experienced and talented TAs will leave our schools. How could that possibly be successful for, how could that possibly be successful with this continuing to happen? The solution is to listen to what these educators are telling us. They need a salary increase of a starting wage of $17 an hour. The salary increase that you're proposing tonight is not going to work. They will continue to have to take multiple jobs to survive. We know that the COVID relief money is out there and it can help, and we also know that you're reluctant to use it, but we're telling you the situation is dire. Please don't pass a $14 an hour minimum wage tonight for our classified workers. We need you to do better. Do everything you can, use the money we have for a $17 an hour minimum wage for all classified workers. Thank you.
Malaney Cooper will follow Ms. Younon.
We are excited to announce that Donna Gargit, Denise Younon, Linda Higgins, and Carrie Miller, together with a group of determined advocates, have formed a planning committee to charter a Special Education Parent Teacher Association called SEPTA here in New Hanover County. There are SEPTA units across the country, but to our knowledge, there are no active chapters in North Carolina. SEPTA advocates for exceptional students and collaborates with school district administrators and educational staff to help bring about the most positive educational and social, emotional outcomes for our children. All 45 New Hanover County schools will be included to unite and empower parents, grandparents, and caretakers of exceptional students. SEPTA provides families with an organizational structure, resources, and the opportunity to be a collective voice for their child and all children. SEPTA sponsors workshops and speakers on topics that advocate for exceptional students and helps parents better understand the special needs and individual diagnoses of their children. SEPTA units end feelings of aloneness by offering parent support. Parents speak on issues that concern their children. Caretakers learn about doctors and services that are a positive experience for their child and places to go for an eye exam or a haircut that aren't stressful. Many chapters offer family fun days like sporting events or picnics. This is a comfortable and safe space for families to be together. Exceptional students need support to survive and thrive. We hope we can count on the New Hanover County School Board, administrators, and educational staff to help form a mutually beneficial collaborative partnership with the Special Education PTA. Thank you.
Malaney Cooper, followed by Jessica Wilson.
Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Malaney Cooper. I'm the founder of Speak Your Peace North Carolina. This evening, I'll be speaking on Policy 2120. I would like to start off with a song. If anyone knows it and they'd like to sing it, please join along. A B C D E F G H I J K L M N O P Q R S T U V W X Y and Z. I chose that song because that is the language that four, five, six, and seven year olds speak. They should not be suspended from school. All of you before me sit in a position of power. All of you before me sit in a position where you have the authority to change this. Rather than speak to this racist, oppressive climate that looms within this community, you prefer to begin the labelingization process of our babies who are truthfully the global majority and not the minority that you call them. The dictionary defines oppression as prolonged cruel or unjust treatment or control. This is what's happening. Malcolm states, "America preaches integration and practices segregation." Stokely Carmichael quotes, "There is a higher law than the law of government." That's the law of conscience. I ask that each one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight of you use that tonight. A B C D E F G H I J K L M N O P Q R S. Stop the nonsense.
After Jessica Wilson, Rebecca Biddle.
Good evening. My name is Jessica Wilson. I am a parent with two children in the New Hanover County school system. I'm here tonight to speak in support of the $17 an hour minimum wage for all of our classified employees. From bus drivers that ensure our children get to school safely and home each day, to our cafeteria workers that are ensuring our children are well-fed, and our TAs that provide so much direct support to our children each day, they are all deserving of a livable wage. I want to speak specifically about our teachers assistants. As I mentioned, I have two children. My son is in third grade and he is an EC student. As part of his IEP, he spends a large portion of his day with direct support from a TA. His TA consistently goes above and beyond the call of duty. He has a great relationship with my son that is incredibly important to my son's success at school. When I send my son to school each day, I know he has the support of someone that he trusts, someone that makes him feel safe and comfortable in a world that for him is many times overwhelming. When I say my son loves his TA, I mean it. He loves him. He's probably just top five people in the world. And I know that there are many others that have similar experiences to ours. As a parent, you cannot put a price tag on something like that. All of our TAs are doing such an important job and I'm thankful for the positive impact that they have on all of our kids. I doubt any of our classified employees have salted their jobs because of the pay, but if we want to retain these employees, we are going to have to understand and acknowledge the work that they do every day and how they benefit our children's educational experience, and we're going to have to compensate them accordingly. Thank you.
And following Ms. Biddle, if I'm saying that correctly, Mr. Chris Sutton.
My name is Rebecca Biddle and I have worked as a teaching assistant in New Hanover County for 15 years and I still make well below $30,000. My job is both rewarding and exhausting physically and emotionally. I consider myself a professional, however, my salary does not reflect this. Under the new state budget and your proposed raises, a newly hired teaching assistant will start at $15 an hour for the 2022-23 school year, which is still not a livable wage. I'm wondering, what would a teacher assistant with over a decade of experience receive? An educator who has attended professional development workshops alongside teachers, who runs small groups, tests students, documents behaviors, substitute teaches, who teaches the whole class while the teacher is busy helping a student who is having an emotional breakdown or vice versa? We shouldn't have to tell you how important we are, but we are paid like we don't matter, like we are disposable. We are asking for a starting salary of $17 an hour with substantial increases for years of service. We need to use the ESAR funds of 88.5 million to give us a raise now. We are going broke more than ever with the rising cost of living in this expensive city. You could take a survey to see how the teacher assistants feel about receiving COVID relief funds, even though these funds are not recurring. I know the answer would be, we need the money now. I applaud Vice Chair Deb Hayes for asking why funds were allocated to fill new positions, but dollars couldn't be redirected to raise the pay of teacher assistants. I am asking the same question. Thank you.
And following Chris Sutton is Barbara Garro.
All right, first off, Dr. Faust, I think that you need to explain to these people why you yanked the endowment fund part off of the agenda when we had two board members that wanted to speak about it, Ms. Adams. I put it on there. I believe you have the power as chair where even if he didn't want to discuss it, you should have allowed these people to discuss it. Y'all want to talk about not having money? We've got $1.25 billion in an endowment fund that we could have asked for money for, okay? But that's not the only thing. Tonight's your last night as chair, and the problem is that you have kept so much off the agenda and misused your power. Tyrannical is the word that comes to mind. Truth is that even tonight, we still haven't even had the conflict of interest conversation, yet here we are talking to Tharrington Smith and this other organization, which by the way, Pointer has already worked with them multiple times. They're close enough together that they're sharing each other on their Facebooks and they're a block apart. How did we end up with those two tonight? There's a lot of things that we have questions for, I don't have much time to even touch on, but what matters tonight the most? This board vote, because I am concerned that some of these people up here, Ms. Crable, unfortunately, Nelson Bollier, I am concerned about them potentially getting the chair position because honestly, they're going to stifle and impede just like you have. And it's nothing personal. Me and you had a great conversation before, but the raw reality of it is that you stifled and impeded progress multiple times, including with the endowment fund, because you had the power. If we would have had a Pete or a Walker up there, it wouldn't have went that way. We would have had a discussion even if they were against it, and that's an issue. This keeps happening over and over. So tonight, board members, especially you, Mr. McManus, I love you, we really need y'all to take into account what's best for our community. And right now, I don't believe it's Ms. Crable and unfortunately, I don't think it's Mr. Bollier considering that he lost control of this place within an hour of stepping into your position when you left. And not just that, but he also didn't support the Constitution. But I'll see you on the debate stage if I make it there, Mr. Bollier. You can only duck me so long.
Barbara Garro, followed by Rocky Jeter Webb.
Good evening. I can't sing and I'm not going to. My message tonight is that you, the Board of Education, have the power to make positive change for all the staff in this room, for all the teachers, the school bus drivers, and the children. Teaching assistants here in North Carolina are paid 64% of the national average pay, while the cost of living here is 105% of the national average. According to ZipRecruiter, the highest paid teachers assistants in North Carolina are in Winston-Salem, Greenville, and Greensboro. We are fifth in the state behind Raleigh. We should be the first. The cost of living, excuse me, the cost of living in Wilmington is one percentage point of Raleigh and Greenville and 9% higher than in Greensboro. Aren't our teachers assistants as valued here as in these other cities in North Carolina? Teachers assistants are instrumental in the classroom care of young learners and allow teachers to have the extra hands in helping young learners stay on target in terms of learning and group behavior. Hire more teachers assistants and specialists, pay them well, thus reducing classroom stress and enabling those students that need more help to receive the attention they need. Keep four, five, six, and seven year old children in school where they belong. You have the power to help both the teachers, teachers assistants, and young children, and you have the access to financial resources to make this happen. Thank you.
How much money have y'all made over the last year and half of this mess? How many lies have y'all told the public and students of public schools? What science says children are at risk of catching COVID in their mask work? Why is critical race theory being secretly intimate into our schools when it's based on a lie? Why is the Sheriff Department blocking us and against us from interacting? Why is the Sheriff Department blocking us and against us from entering the building to exercise our constitutional rights? Why is the Board of Education scared of public criticism? Why are public schools getting the shots and trying to force them on children? Why did New Hanover County sell out the health and freedom of our children for $57 million? All these questions still have no answers. If y'all spent time doing actual research, you would know children pose little to no threat of catching COVID. If y'all did actual research, y'all would know that children are more likely to be struck by lightning than catching COVID. Have you never read a medical book? Have you never read a history book? Or are you just an elected bureaucrat hungry for power? Either start listening to us, follow the science, do your research, or get ready to lose your suits in the next election. Keep the shots out of our schools, because they will kill our children and take the masks off of our children. Let's go Brandon.
Mr. Pat Bradford, followed by Cheryl Emma.
Good evening. Here we are again. I have really tried to figure out why you do what you do. And it occurs to me that there's three types of fear. So you have some decisions to make tonight. You have people here that are afraid. They don't get paid enough. Kids are getting locked up. Kids are suspended. There's fear, right? There's three types of fear. There's rational fear. Rattlesnake in the driveway, you got to get to your car. That's rational fear. There's primal fear. Fear that's defined as an innate fear that's programmed into our brain. That's the fight-or-flight fear. And then there's irrational fear. Irrational fear is the ones that don't make logical sense, and they can vary greatly from person to person, and that describes you. But there's good news. The Bible says, "For God has not given us a spirit of fear, but of power and love and a sound mind." That is 2 Timothy 1 through 7. And here's the thing. You're supposed to love children, but I don't see any love. You're supposed to have sound minds, but I don't see any sound minds. So I'm going to pray that for you right now. Father, I thank you that each and every one of these people sitting in this power, this position of authority tonight will have a sound mind, and they will love children. And I bind fear in this room, and I bind fear in your lives, and I replace it with love, joy, peace, long-suffering, gentleness, metnus, temperance, and faith. In Jesus' name. Now, this box, we all recognize, we've bought hundreds of them, it says right here on the box, "Instructions: Warning: This mask does not eliminate the risk of contracting any disease or infection." Come on, you guys. This doesn't work?
Ms. Bradford, your time is up. Thank you. Ms. Emma, followed by Robert Bellamy.
Dr. Faust and board members, I'm Cheryl Emma. I spoke last month at this meeting, and after the decisions made on the state level, I decided to speak again. Clearly, we are not valued at the state level, and I'm asking that New Hanover County shows that it values teacher assistants by providing a starting wage of $17 an hour with additional increases for veteran TAs. I have been a teacher assistant for over 16 years, making $14.84 an hour. My take-home pay last month was $1,979. Some people may think that we have it made with the summers off. I am unemployed during that time, so I have to get a part-time job. I had an option to spread my pay over 12 months, but declined to do so, because then I would be working with about $1,600 a month. Can you make ends meet with that? Several colleagues are considering looking into food stamps to see if they qualify to help with their monthly needs. We shouldn't have to worry about whether or not we could meet our basic needs each month and still give 110% to we educating our students. With the raise that the state wants to give us, I will be getting an additional 37 cents. That's including the 2.5% factored in, which still puts me under $27,000. At $17 an hour, we would be making just shy of $30,000, which would start to compensate us for the many hats we wear, such as substitute teacher on the fly, small group instructor, counselor, and nurse. We continue to work in this profession because we love being a part of educating children, but the demands being put on us do not match the pay that we receive. Teacher assistants most likely helped educate every adult in this room. I understand that money has been earmarked for new positions that are needed. However, if TAs are once again passed over for significant pay raises, which would bring us up to a livable wage in this expensive city, we will see more vacancies. Thank you.
And following Robert Bellamy is Marielle Cruz.
Hello, everyone. My name is Robert Bellamy. I'm a member of Speak Your Peace North Caroler. I'm here to support policy 2120, "Love Our Children." I wrote a poem, and the poem is called "You're Suspended, But I'm Just a Child." There is something we as Americans, we should always mention. There is no way a kid four to seven years of age should even have suspension, especially if the danger is not near and his fist is just clenching. Can we get your attention? Can we get your attention? I am upset with just the fact that it's even allowed. You're suspending a baby when you're suspending a four to seven-year-old undeveloped mind of a child. Who are these intelligent adults who make these ridiculous rules? Is it because their kids are in private schools? How can anyone teach a kid anything without basic common sense, corrective work skills, and thinking tools? Who are these people? Who gets to choose? When a kid's mind, who is starting, when a kid's mind who is starting to develop is always the one who loses? It is shameful. Parents, people, stand up. Our leadership is lacking. Let's send these stupid laws, and anyone who supports them packing. Where there is no compassion, the people and the parents must take action. Love our children, love our children. Our necks come in attraction. Thank you very much.
Marielle Cruz, and following Marielle Cruz is Yolanda Hernandez.
Hi, my name is Marielle Cruz. I'm a mom of a fourth grader and a seventh grader, and I'm an elementary TA in New Hanover County Schools. I'm here to ask that you use the federal COVID relief funds New Hanover County received to increase the salaries of all classified staff members to at least a minimum of $17 an hour. I love my job, but I hate my salary. I'm the employee that you want to head daily bus transportation, to help third graders who need their math lessons reinforced, to aid 21 kindergarteners in learning to read and write, and all the tears that come with their big daily problems. I monitor and help clean up after kindergarten through fifth graders in the loud cafeteria. My schedule often changes daily when I'm asked to cover or substitute at any time. My coworkers know that they can count on me at any time for help with anything they need. And yet, for all I do, I don't make enough money to survive. I sadly gross less than $24,000 as a 10-month New Hanover County Schools employee. Yes, that's gross. That's barely $10 an hour for 40 hours of work a week, which is considered poverty wages. I have a bachelor's degree, which I'm not compensated for, and more than eight years of experience in education. I am smart, patient, and qualified. And yet, what did I do over the Thanksgiving five-day break? I worked, even on Thanksgiving. This past weekend, I worked. The coming weekend, I'm going to work. How can I give my all when I get so little? I know that my work is appreciated, but in the end, this is a job, and I need to pay my bills. The salary increases that you are proposing tonight are not enough. I will still have to work a second job. I will still make poverty wages, and I will continue to have one of the lowest salaries in the entire nation. I'm asking you to do more. If you want qualified, experienced, and hard-working educators, then you need to listen to us and value our work. Use COVID relief money to pay all classified workers.
You, the Board of Education, have the power to change policy. The last time a strategic plan was adopted by the Board was in 2016. That's five years ago. Nothing has been done since then. Ending out-of-school suspension for four, five, six, and seven-years-old, they're babies, remind you, except for guns, drugs, or violent assaults, needs to be part of your 2022 strategic plan for the upcoming year. When four, five, six, and seven-year-olds are kicked out of school, they are receiving no education. And yet, the Board of Education speaks about their concerns about learning loss, okay? Learning loss is created by out-of-school suspension, during which time, children get no support, because when they're acting out, it's usually because they're not getting the instruction that they may need at home. So they need our support. And what is the value of an education? Sorry, just lost it, okay? A strong public education, excuse me, educational system is essential to the individual and collective well-being of our country, okay, and its people, and to the development of an informed and engaged citizenry, without which a democracy cannot exist and flourish. So we need these babies in the school. We need to support them. We need to find, or you need to find, ways to assist these children, not kick them out of school, okay? We need to find, we need to support them with mental health staff, and...
Ms. Hernandez, your time is up.
And we need to be responsible for teaching, not...
Sunny Stamper is next. Sunny Stamper, and following Sunny Stamper is Lily Cor.
Hello. My name is Sunny Stamper, and I'm a beginning teacher in my third year of teaching, and this is my second year at Forest Hills Global Elementary. I'm one out of 12 beginning teachers at Forest Hills, and I'm one of the few staff at Forest Hills to return for a second year. We have an exceedingly high turnover rate for the staff at Forest Hills because of staffing shortages, low wages, and unsafe working conditions. Every day, I see my coworkers crack under the weight of responsibility and exhaustion, juggling new curriculum, pandemic protocol, additional duties, needs of students with adverse experiences, and finding time to just use the bathroom. A lot of days, I'm on the other end of that scenario. Unsafe situations are regularly escalated to crisis before staff can respond to properly solve the situation due to lack of staff. These situations often lead to the evacuation of classrooms, disruption of learning environment, and additional stress to the other students in the classroom. This afternoon, afternoon even, I stopped when a TA subbing for a fourth-grade class had to evacuate her classroom. An instructional coach came running to help as we waited for someone else to be able to respond to the assistance call. We cannot teach in these conditions. I do believe teaching requires passion, and I know that I wouldn't do this job if I wasn't passionate about doing absolutely everything I can to support my kids. That's why we're all here, because we want to better support our students. However, there is a breaking point. We deserve to be treated better than this. We're asking for help. We're asking for grace and support, cooperation as well as compensation. We're asking for better pay, which will lead to higher retention and recruitment, and to be respected and heard by leadership at the district and the state level. I implore you to hear those sharing tonight and to continue to be present in our schools and work alongside us to better the futures of our schools and our students. We need you to show up for us and them. Thank you.
Followed by Jasmine Garcia.
Hello, Board and Dr. Faust. Let's talk about the Equity Pep Rally Summit that took place on November 19. It was hosted by Sophix Solutions, a newly-formed entity riding on the equity bandwagon. Seventy to eighty kids were chosen from all the middle and high schools in the county to attend. Not one board member knew about this. There were real problems with the content and lack of substance, but let's first look at the great secrecy and covert nature of it. The administration was told to keep this hush-hush. It wasn't even put on the school calendar, and a nonpartisan group of about 12 parents showed up to observe. Not one peep was made to the kids, yet LaShawn Smith had us thrown off the parking lot. Stephanie Crable so wisely spread the rumor that these parents yelled at the kids. Nope, didn't happen, and we have at least nine videos to back that up. Kids were inside the summit texting their parents that they felt uncomfortable, but they were too afraid to speak out. They were made to chant, "Equity is equality," and that is a lie. As the co-founders of Sophix Solutions, Stephanie and Rodney Smith were sneaking into the back door, Mr. Waddleburg went over to them and introduced himself as a Board of Ed member. They laughed at him and wouldn't give their names. On a 2020 podcast entitled Sophix Solutions and Systemic Racism, Stephanie said, "There's a need to redistribute power and change structures." Let me interpret. Let's not base anything off of merit, initiative, or hard work. Stephanie did defend the burning and looting of buildings in 2020. At the end, they both trashed capitalism, with Stephanie's exact words being, "Racism is a tool to perpetuate capitalism. We need to dismantle the system steeped in capitalism." The funny part is, is that the Smiths would not be making the boatloads of money off of our school system without capitalism. Charles Faust brought his buddies here and paid them out of our discretionary funds. That money could have been used to pay our hard-working TAs.
Jasmine Garcia, followed by Kevin Cogan.
Good evening. I work as a special education TA at Forest Hills Elementary School, and I spoke last month here with you, to you guys, about how overworked and underpaid TAs are at our school. And I'm back, because you all are voting on a $14 an hour minimum wage tonight, and it's very insulting, it's depressing, and it's devastating, as you've heard. And we've all tried to make it clear that our students and our staff in New Hanover County are in dire crisis, we're in need, and these past two years have pushed us to our breaking point. And you are the only people, again, who can help us, and we desperately need to retain and recruit high-quality educators, or this crisis will only get worse. And we know that you have the $88.5 million of unspent COVID relief funds. You could choose to use this money tomorrow for raises that we need today, we need now, but yet, all we hear is that you can't. Why? I would really, and I think everybody else would like to know, why is it that we cannot allocate those funds to be needed where they are needed? Why shouldn't we prioritize buying more technology or laptops when the very core of our school is deteriorating? Why can't we use this money to stabilize this crisis, support our classified staff, ensure, I'm sorry, of our schools, use the extra time to find more money for recruit, I'm sorry, recurring issue, raises? I'm sorry. I'm so tired. You've met with the county commissioners, and ultimately, no action was taken, or we haven't heard about it. When you do the brave thing, the necessary thing, we will be more than grateful.
Ms. Garcia, I'm sorry, your time is up.
Oh, I'm sorry. Okay. Thank you.
Hi, my name's Kevin. I'm actually a former special ed teacher, and I left teaching because I made more at my part-time job than I did at my full-time job, but that's just to separate from that. I represent a growing group of people that looked at my three, that took my three children out of the school system this past year, as did many families in my neighborhood. Good, solid, supportive families, all leaving the school system. We have seen this play out elsewhere, and the schools go into a downward spiral with loss of funding, teachers get no support. This doesn't end well. But you are creating the same toxic atmosphere here. The masks, the sex abuse, the safety, the lack of focus on actual education are all factors. I hope the school board sees this growing trend and refocuses on what's really important. I hope the school board sees this growing trend and refocuses on what's really important. Board, some of you will be here long after Faust is gone and leaves another failed school system on his resume, but please, don't leave that on yours, too. One day, you will have to stand in front of these same parents and ask them for their vote for reelection, furthering your political aspirations, Stephanie. And there will be parents like me holding you accountable and asking, "What have you done?" You have awoken us. We aren't voting down ballot anymore. We all know, and we're wise to your games. You can't hide behind following the science when you've never listed, AKA Judy, you've never listed one study, you've never listed one medical journal, not, nothing, never, not one. How about a Board member going in front of a group and admitting they have racist thoughts? Ask any minority in this room, seriously, I ask you. How do you feel that a member that you're looking at right now admitted they have racist thoughts, but hasn't resigned their position and still asserts their position of power over you? It's all a transparent act. It's a political posturing, it's nonsense. I hope you see through this like I do. Please, just teach our children. Pay teachers, let them teach. Stop causing the very mental health issues you are now wasting my tax money to fix. Just teach reading, writing, math, science. There's nothing more empowering than knowledge. So, stop teaching kids what to think, rather teach them how to think and how to learn.
And our final will be Amy Betts.
Good evening. My name is Paul Summers. I just have a few words of advice. As you formulate the next four-year plan, I hope you will be sure to end the suspension of any student at elementary school in the county, except for possessing a lethal weapon or illegal drugs or committing a violent assault. What you can do now, this year, is to amend the Policy 4300, so that, to end the suspension of our youngest students, ages four, five, six, and seven. I know some of you are convinced that a gradual policy, an incremental policy of improving discipline methods will do the job, and a policy change to forbid the suspension is not needed. I'm familiar with the plans that Julie Varnum and Susan Cole produced to provide special training for principals and teachers in the summer, and to get new plans for student discipline formulated by the different schools. I hope this works. It may work if you adopt a policy ending the suspension. It might be redundant. It will serve as a documentation for the, what we are finally doing in the county, the right thing. I think we should trust our principals, counselors, social workers, psychologists, resource officers, teaching assistants, interventionists, behavior support specialists. Trust them to teach proper behavior. Don't send our youngest students into exile for their, exile from their learning environment.
Thank you. Audience is Amy Betts.
My name is Amy Betts. I drove four hours to be here today, and I'm going to apologize if I'm a little emotional. I am an educator, a mother, and the founder of a nonprofit called Adelies. My rights continue to be violated with the assistance from this public school system, along with the administrative state, some of the agencies, and the sheriffs. I also continue to be retaliated against for speaking out. My pleas for help continue to be ignored. I'm a parent of three school-aged children, one 11-year-old here in New Hanover County. I've been fraudently kept out of the schools as they continue to violate my rights as an American citizen. Today, I walked into my daughter's middle school with the principal, with the vice-principal, and then I was escorted out by the principal with assistance of a sheriff. I showed up to do PTA, but I had to leave. My questions for you are, why am I being escorted from my school's, my child's school? Why are parents fraudently being kept out of our children's schools? We want to help, but you all are keeping us out. The schools need the help. I'm an educator, but you all continue to keep me out. What is the purpose of the masks? I follow the science, I read it. I work for a research organization. I read a lot about a lot of different things. Why does New Hanover County continue to violate my rights when I continue to reach out for assistance? Why are the public school boards, who have never met me and do not have medical degrees, creating criteria for my health and people that they do not know? Why does a New Hanover County school personnel administration allow to do what they want but violate the rights of others with assistance from the sheriff's office? Are you aware that New Hanover County-
Sorry, your time is up. Moving on to our agenda, our amended agenda, we will move on to the COVID update. I'm going to ask Ms. Varnum to come to the microphone, and just as a note, Ms. Carla Turner from the Health Department had a conflict this evening. So, she is not going to be here to present. She has sent information to Ms. Varnum to be able to share as far as the data goes, and so Ms. Varnum has access to that today to share.
Good evening, Chair Adams and Board members. As just shared, I am bringing you the local Health Department data, as Ms. Turner had another engagement this evening. In order to bring you the most recent community metrics, I wanted to make sure that I was providing you information from today, as of December 7th. So, I can share with you that the New Hanover County Health and Human Services case rates, test percent positivity, and vaccination rates, as reported by the Health Department, are as following. The CDC transmission rate remains at substantial. The percent positive is 5.49%, and the vaccination rates are broken down by percentage with one dose and then percent fully vaccinated. I can share with you, with percent fully vaccinated, five to 11-years-old is 8%. 12 to 17-years-old is 49%. Quoting from the North Carolina Department of Health and Human Services Frequently Asked Questions dated November 22nd, "Given that our student population is largely not yet vaccinated, face coverings remain a critical tool for protecting children and keeping them safely in the classroom." This information is five days old. I can give you, but at the point that I needed to upload this for public review, it was, it was current. So, I can provide you the December 7th updates, which is just a little bit different. But the North Carolina Department of Health and Human Services and the Department of Public Instruction Strong Schools Toolkit cites CDC guidance as the following. Currently, for New Hanover County, North Carolina, seven-day metrics dated today, December 7th. The cases have moved from 160 to 225. The case rate per 100,000 has moved from 68.24 to 95.96. The percent positivity, as I just shared, it has moved from 4.45% to 5.49%. Deaths remain at zero. The percent of population of fully vaccinated, greater than 12 years, greater or equal to 12 years, has risen from 64.9 to 65.1. New hospital admissions are no longer 17, but are 21 for this seven-day period. The New Hanover County COVID metrics trends had seen significant reductions since the third week of school. Over the prior six weeks from last week, had seen reduction. We'll mention that there was a slight rise last week, and we had 20 or less positive cases and quarantines separately over the past six or more weeks. But last week, we moved to 36, I did not bring my glasses, 35 positive cases last week, and 23 quarantines. There's not yet a local update on the new variant and its implications, and that remains current as of today. So, the quarantine guidance from the Strong Schools Toolkit, pages 15 to 16, shares that individuals who are not fully vaccinated after a close contact in a classroom or other school setting, if masks were being worn appropriately and consistently by both the person with COVID-19, meaning the person who has tested positive, and the potentially exposed person, meaning that its potentially exposed person does not need to quarantine. And this is based on updated studies that have shown low risk of COVID-19 transmission in classroom settings when face masks were being used appropriately by both the person with COVID-19 and the potentially exposed person, as well as multiple layers of preventive measures in place to prevent transmission in school settings. That would include the routine cleaning and distancing. This applies to exposures in classrooms, other in-school settings, and schools' transportation, but of course, does not apply to exposure during extracurricular, including athletic activities. I will share that quarantine measures remain consistent. Those have not changed per CDC guidance and the Strong Schools Toolkit. Also, provide you an update on ongoing vaccine and testing efforts. We have been gauging our families through our Communications and Outreach Division on their interest in vaccine clinics. Again, parents must be present, and they must explicitly consent before any vaccines are delivered. And our WAT clinics, which is, stands for Wilmington Health Access for Teens, in our traditional high schools, is also supporting that, testing and vaccine, but again, with explicit parental consent, not a generic WAT clinic consent. That is all I have for you.
All right. Does, any questions from the Board regarding COVID updates? Ms. Justice?
Yeah, well, you brought the statistics that she just gave you for today. Did she give you how many, oh, sorry about that. Did she give you the statistics from the case, if there's been case increase? You said it was five point, up to 5.49. Do you happen to remember what it was during our last meeting?
I don't know what it was during our last meeting, but as of last week-
It was in, it was in the twos, at the last meeting.
So, it was two-something?
I think.
So, on December 2nd, I can tell you what it was, and I can go back, I believe I can go back and find that. And I can certainly get it from Ms. Turner.
Well, you know, Ms. Adams said, "I think it was two-something." I can't remember the number, but it sounds like it's doubled. And honestly, I looked up before I came to see, from yesterday, and there was 86 positive cases yesterday, which is increasing. It's up to 33 a week now, as opposed to, a week before, it was 21 a week. I'm just saying, there's obviously an increase here, so wouldn't you agree? Yes.
Madam Chair?
Yes, Mr. Wildebauer.
Just a question. The new hospital admissions, were any of those 18 and under? Do we know?
I don't have that information, but I can ask.
Okay.
Anything else? Thank you very much, Ms. Varnum. Appreciate it. All right, thank you for those updates. Then that brings us to the next item that was amended onto the agenda, the state-required vote regarding masks in schools. Per Senate Bill 654, Section X, for the 2021-22 school year, each public school unit shall adopt a face covering policy, and local school boards shall vote at least once per month on whether the policy should be modified, based on information that has been received. Does anyone want to bring forward a motion?
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion that we make mask, masking optional, also called choice, effective tomorrow morning at the beginning of the day in all schools and school system buildings of New Hanover County schools.
So, the motion, the motion is to make masks optional in all New Hanover County schools and facilities within the district, beginning tomorrow.
Effective tomorrow morning.
Is there a second?
Sure.
Thank you, Mr. Willeer. Is there any discussion? I would like to start, Ms. Crable.
The, I would like for us to make sure that, as part of that motion, we address sports, because sports will, we've already talked about the winter sports, but spring sports will be coming up. And I think that we should also address having visitors in our schools, perhaps not be mask optional, but mask mandatory.
Yeah, that was going to be my question. If there are different regulations or conversations that the Board wants to have regarding this, does that need to be a separate motion?
So, there's two questions. One was, do you need to make a separate motion? And the answer is, you can either make a separate motion, or you can move to a gen, I'm sorry, amend Mr. Willebauer's motion. There's certainly no downside to having multiple motions, that I can see, and addressing them separately.
I'll address separately.
Okay. All right, Ms. Justice.
Well, obviously, the discussion is, instead of things getting better, and I, I really want these masks off. I have two kids at home I live with every day, have to put their masks, I'll walk the door. And yes, I've read plenty of scientific articles, and I'm not going to be posting them all over the email constantly, we all have. It's getting sort of old, the same request. But anyway, this is for the sake, the health of the kids. It's doubled again. I know there's some Board members up here that said if it got above 5%, they would be concerned again. Well, please do. We've got this variant, we have no idea what it means. It sounds like it's not horrible compared to, I guess, the condition, I'm not a scientist there, I'll admit that, but it's, it's not any more deadly, it looks like, but it is more contagious. Here we go again. I would love to be over this. We're not going to get over this until we keep trying to prevent it from happening, which is what the masks are about. And it's only 8% of the kids that are vaccinated at this point. That's what Ms. Varnum said. I'm talking about the elementary school kids. Give them some time. That's our best bet, is vaccinations and wearing the mask. That's my take on it. I want to keep kids safe. I'm always going to keep kids safe. That's always the first thing. And the staff. These staff over here can be put at risk. I don't want them at risk, either.
Thank you. Other comments? Ms. Walker?
Well, I, I've had plenty of discussions with everyone, and I was, I mean, if the rates were still pretty low, can you, okay. If the rates were still, I was very prepared to, you know, entertain a mask optional issue. The fact that it's gone up so fast, so quickly, I, I feel like we should be cautious about it. I do take Ms. Crable's exception when it talks, when she's talking about sports, because for some reason, I mean, I, I mean, I know I'm probably not saying the right thing here, but I just feel like kids running around in basketball, playing basketball masks on, I mean, I don't think that's necessarily, I'd like to address that separately, but to this motion here, I mean, I've been struggling with this. I know we all have been struggling. The fact is, at some point, we're going to have to pivot to existing with this virus, and we're going to have to, you know, experiment with the masks off when the rates are lower. You know, I was prepared, but, but seeing the rates this high again, I'm, I'm really kind of feeling like I want to pause on that.
Mr. McManus? Back to Mr. Willeer.
This, this has certainly been a challenge, and will continue to be. First, is this going to be something we're going to have to live with for the rest of our lives? I'm going to support the optional no mask, and I'll tell you why. Because I, we tied ourselves to the Health Department, and we were steadfast as long as the Health Department kept their mandate. They dropped it, and so I feel we need to try the option. But I would like to follow that up with saying, if the numbers go up, and if they do, we're going to have to rethink and talk about it.
All right, Mr. Willeer?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Yeah, you know, I know, I think the one thing I've learned in two years of dealing with COVID-19, like I hope most of you have learned, it's going to go up, and it's going to go down, and it's going to go up, and it's going to go down. It yoyos, it's consistent, it's almost the only thing I know for sure about COVID-19. Here in New Hanover County, I have the numbers pulled up. We have 29,579 total cases, and we have been dealing with this for 20 years, which means 12% of our population has been infected. So, how long do we wait to get to full immunity before we do what France has done and England has done, and said, "Look, we don't know exactly what the risks to our students' education is, but we think they're there, and we want to deal with this in a little bit different way." So, I, I will do what I did last week and continue to support mask optional until hospitalizations and death increase, not cases.
I would like to just make a few comments. You know, for me, this has always been about instructional time and keeping students in schools. And last week, New Hanover County schools had 35- And last week, New Hanover County schools had 35 cases, which led to 23 quarantines. Okay, so a total of, you know, 50 students were impacted. In Brunswick County, they had 75 cases, and they had 300 quarantines, because they are mask optional. In Pender County, seven cases meant 40 quarantines. If we are trying to keep our students in school, masks are the way to go, and I'm going to stay steadfast with that, and that's how I feel. It's about the safety and protection of our students and staff.
Madam Chairwoman, if I could, insert a couple of legal considerations.
Please.
Not, not with the motion itself, but two things for the board's consideration. One, and I was just consulting with Ms. Varnum about this. One is, would the board consider making a mask optional policy, or specifying that it is, if consistent with applicable federal law? And the reason I say that is because you have some Head Start classrooms who are under federal regulations and may still be required.
Okay, can you expand on that just a little bit for the board to understand?
So some of your, a few of your pre-K classrooms are funded and provided by the federal Head Start program and therefore are governed by certain federal regulations and executive orders that your other classrooms are not. This, and I don't know how many classrooms that is, it's not...
It's a whole school.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry, it's one whole school. The second is whether you would consider allowing the staff discretion to require masks specifically of people who are interacting with medically fragile students, and that's to stay consistent with the IDEA, to the extent there is an individual medically fragile student whose particular condition requires that people around them be masked. So those are just considerations if the movement is comfortable with, with making those stipulations. If not, it's up for discussion.
So if we go ahead and vote on this item, and I'm not, I'm actually not 100% positive which way it's going to go right now, but with, if it were to pass mask optional, would we then need to do additional motions to address the two things that were just mentioned?
So if the movement and the second are comfortable with including, would say, accept like a friendly amendment to include those conditions, that would be one way to handle it without doing a follow-up motion. If they're not comfortable with that, then the board can certainly address it in a second motion.
So basically, you're asking for medically fragile children to have, have people around them have masks in the one school?
Right. If, just to note that, if required by federal law, that those schools would still do it and that staff still have the authority to require it for specific medically fragile children, if necessary.
I think that's fine.
That's fine, all right. Mr. Wildabour says yes, does the second agree? Okay.
And one other thing is, just to note, under the CDC requirements, and again, our transportation is also federally regulated, masks will still be required on buses.
But that does not need to be within the motion. That is just something that is required for all. So all students, regardless of which way we go, will continue to have to stay masked on buses.
That's the current rule, yes.
Madam Chair?
Yes, sir.
I just wanted a quick point of clarification from you. We still have to vote every month, that's correct? It doesn't matter what we do today, we have to vote every single month.
Yes.
Yes, Ms. Justice?
Yeah, and I want to point out that both Brunswick County and Pender County, which are mask optional, now it looks like their quarantine numbers are getting big. They're a lot smaller counties than we are. The schools are a lot less crowded than we are. So we're endangering, and I, I'm really concerned about having hundreds of kids out of school if we follow this, because it's going to be really hard.
Madam Chair, I'd like to go ahead and call the question, please.
I'm sorry?
I'd like to call the question, please.
All right, Ms. Crable, do you have a...
It's, it's around that. So the medically fragile students is, would we be required to create a list at each school? Because I'm, I'm trying to figure out how we're going to manage that, because the thing that bothers me most about how we're managing it right now in our school system is that it's not being managed. And at many of our schools, masks are not being worn or worn appropriately. It's being posted on Facebook that they're not, so we, we know it. So how, how would we manage that?
That's a, that's a great question.
I want to protect those medically fragile children.
And I would not recommend that there be lists, but just that, the same way, when you have a student who has a severe peanut allergy, sometimes there's a sign on the classroom door that says, "Those who enter," you know, "No peanuts come into this room because we have someone with a severe allergy." Something similar, just to say that anyone who comes with, you know, and again, this is very few students. I mean, and they would, you know, be students with disabilities, that there be, the ability, if needed, for those special education staff to require that if people are going to come close to the student, that they wear a mask.
What do we do if we have a parent or a kid, or a parent that comes in and wants to move their kid out of the classroom with the medically fragile child because they don't want to wear a mask? I mean, so we, do we have to accommodate that? I mean, I'm just thinking of all the things that parents are going to do to, to do that.
So I was honestly concerned more about the adults who are working with those students. I think just as we do with service animals and other things, that we would have to take that on a case-by-case basis.
Okay.
Okay, Mr. Wildabour has asked to call the question. Ms. Bullier, I think we're going to have a split vote here, so if you could please call the roll. And the, just to remind everyone, the motion that is on the table is to make masks optional in all New Hanover County schools' facilities, with the exception of the federally funded pre-K programs, as well as...
Buses.
The buses, right? Right, got it, okay. Starting, beginning tomorrow morning, correct, got it.
Ms. Adams?
No.
Mr. Bullier?
Aye.
Ms. Justice?
No.
Ms. Crable?
Yes, mask optional.
Mr. McManus?
Yes.
Ms. Walker?
No.
And Mr. Wildabour?
Aye.
All right. The ayes have it, and a four to three. Next item on the agenda are our consensus items. Do I hear a motion?
Move.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Bullier, thank you, Mr. Wildabour. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Consensus items pass, and I would like to welcome Dr. Barnes up to the podium. Within our consensus items, we did have a personnel report, and we would like to welcome some new employees.
We're proud to announce a hiring of 89 staff for the month of November. I'd specifically highlight and congratulate the 21 substitutes that are added to our substitute pool, as well as two of our new administrative staff members, Deb Trafton as the Assistant Director of Transportation, and Jared Worthington as the Executive Director of School Support. Thank you very much, and thank you, everybody.
Thank you very much, Dr. Barnes.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
We did not talk about the, the second motion related to the first motion on addressing sports and visitors who come into our schools and our classrooms.
May we go back to that? I'm sorry.
Madam Chair?
The sports, I assume that it was, it was in this, under the same jurisdiction. It's, it's mask optional, athletics would fall under that. But as far as the volunteers, I know I've looked at some other districts across the state, and they do require masks for volunteers, any adults that come into the building. So I'm assuming that would require a motion? Eva?
I'm sorry, say that again?
If the, if the board feels that volunteers or, you know, anybody coming in from outside of the school that is a visitor, what, how is that handled with the mask optional?
So my, what I heard of the original motion was staff and students. Did I hear that correctly?
The, was, was just for all, in all buildings.
Okay.
Mask optional.
Well, I think it's worth, what was the intent of the original motion and what was the understanding?
That everyone in, everyone in the buildings would be able to be mask optional. But do we, is that something that we want to discuss further as far as visitors?
So you can definitely discuss it if, I guess, I may have misunderstood if your concern is maybe visitors should be required?
I wanted to amend the motion that Mr. Wildabour made to include that visitors into our school buildings where children are located have to wear a mask, and was told that we could make a separate motion to discuss that. So that's what on masking.
I'm sorry, I understand now. So yes, you can make a motion that visitors be required to wear masks in schools.
Okay, so do I have to go back on the agenda now, since I've moved forward and we moved ahead with consensus items?
I think this is still the agenda item of...
No, we just voted on consensus items, so we moved forward another, another item on the agenda. So do we need, do we need to go back?
I suppose so, yes.
Okay, does that need a motion?
A motion to go back?
Yes. And I apologize for my quickness to move there, sorry about that.
I think if there's, I think the board could allow that by consensus.
Does the board allow it to go back to that?
Yes.
All right. Okay, Ms. Crable, go ahead.
I'd like to make a motion that, within our mask optional policy for staff and students, then we have all visitors into the school that are non-staff visitors have to wear masks.
I'll second that.
Is there a second? Yes, Ms. Walker? All right, any discussion? Yes, Mr. Bullier?
I definitely appreciate that. A, I'm not sure what it's going to do, and B, I feel like that's, boy, that can get confusing. They're allowed no masks in the county, no masks in the school. Visitors who come into the school have to wear the masks. And I just, to me, it kind of seems like we're putting a, a lot out there to try to mitigate, you know, what I perceive to be somewhat minimal risk.
All right, Mr. Wildabour?
Madam Chair, I just have a question on that motion also. Are we talking about, you know, maybe a basketball game? Every, every adult that comes into the building, we're going to have them wear masks? Is that what you're saying?
I can't hear you, Mr. Wildabour.
It's an athletic event. If you have, those are considered visitors, not talking about volunteers during the school day. If it's an athletic event...
I'm wondering if you're talking about, yeah, I'm sorry, whether you're talking about like just volunteers coming in the school day, working with students, or say, you know, we had a wrestling match or a basketball game, we had a lot of, you know, parents that come in, would they also have to be masked?
I'm more interested in the classroom, where visitors come into the classroom and are working one-on-one or in groups with students.
Any other discussion?
Well, I would say, it's probably more likely because they're, they're coming from the outside into the classroom setting, and, and I just think that it's, it makes sense to, you know, to have people to wear masks in that case, because they're coming from the outside into the school environment there. I think that's what Ms. Crable's talking about, I'm not really sure.
Ms. Justice?
Yeah, so specifically, are you saying just for the schools, but not for like games? I was just trying to look, okay.
I, I mean, I'll, I'll be honest, I, you know, I volunteer at my son's school and, in the mornings, and when we have, you know, tardy students, the parents are coming in to sign their child in. And if they're coming in without a mask, we are now providing them a mask. So are we saying that anyone that comes in that is signing their child in, are we providing them a mask for those three minutes that they're in the front lobby? Or are we only talking about classroom environment?
I'm talking about classroom environment, where we are working, we volunteers would be working one-on-one with students.
So particularly, really, it's the volunteer in the classroom is the definitive motion?
Yes.
Okay. All right, so the motion is to require masks for volunteers that are within classrooms. All right, there is a second by Ms. Walker, any other discussion? All right, Ms. Bullier, I guess, could you please call the roll?
Ms. Adams?
Aye.
Mr. Bullier?
No.
Ms. Justice?
Aye.
Ms. Crable?
Aye.
Mr. McManus? Ms. Walker?
Yes.
And Mr. Wildabour?
No.
All right, motion passes, five to two. All right, do we want to take a quick break?
Yes, please.
Okay, let's do five minutes, let's, well, yeah, five minutes. We'll meet back up here for old business. We'll meet back up here for old business. One, two, three, four, five. And now I just saw Ms. Crable, she was just here.
She's always reminded me, I haven't fallen yet, but I do use hands down the crack.
If there are board members in the room, if you could please make your way back to the dais. All right, the next item on the agenda, are we back on? Thank you. Next item under the agenda, we're moving into old business, and we are going to have a strategic plan update. And I believe we have Nancy Parks Hunter and Dr. Pamela Palmer waiting on Zoom for us to provide an update.
Yes, good evening.
Good evening, ladies, how are you?
I can't hear nothing.
I'm sorry, Nancy, that just, you just got muffled. Can you say that again, please?
Um, we have a PowerPoint, and I'm just asking if it could either be shared there and recorded and on, or if that can be shared.
They don't, we, we don't have a copy of it, you guys have the copy of it. If you could, um, I believe that they're giving you sharing rights. You should be able to share it, um, from your computer. Great, thank you.
And Dr. Palmer will start on with an update on where we are with strategic planning.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Pamela Palmer, and I am one of the two consultants on the strategic planning project. Um, in terms of the strategic planning process, we did share this outline with you that, um, at a previous board meeting, uh, that outlined the process. Our process has five phases, and the very first phase of the process is for us to gather feedback data, um, getting some sense of and inquiring with key stakeholders as to what the, um, the preliminary, um, areas of focus might be as it relates to the focal points of the plan. So again, in that first phase, we, um, inquired with stakeholders by way of surveys. Those were in terms of online surveys, interviews, focus groups. And in doing so, we were able to determine some preliminary direction in terms of what the priority areas might be as it relates to the plan. And Nancy, I'll talk a little bit more about that here in just a minute. In Phase Two, um, the plan is to engage with, uh, New Hanover County School Board, um, as well as the staff in the, in the form of a retreat, and to gain insight as to, uh, and perspective as to where we will be at that point with the specifics and particulars around focal points in the plan. The third phase of the process is to hone in on those areas and develop and create, um, specific statements, uh, as it relates to the goals in the plan, present that, um, get feedback on that, and then finalize the plan with any edits that are necessary. Again, um, we have, um, moved, um, quite specifically, uh, in the, in Phase One around, um, getting some data back, um, to identify what those priority areas, um, are at this stage. And I'm gonna let Nancy talk to you a little bit about that, unless there's a question.
Okay, and we're gonna share with you, um, what we see as emerging, right, major areas. And, um, what we will want to do from this point is to ask for full feedback from, um, all of the community, parents, students, staff, uh, everyone, on how you feel about these areas, um, that we see emerging. So one is academic performance, which is achieving high performance by all students and providing many avenues for academic and career exploration. The second is student safety, and I should say these are not in priority order. They are equally weighted, it's just we're looking to see what are the things that need to be areas of strategic work. So student safety and providing a safe, welcoming, and supportive physical and emotional environment for all students. Uh, now there is supportive teacher and staff environment, providing teachers and staff with the tools and support that they need to give excellence to their students. Equity, diversity, and inclusion, ensuring that every student feels valued and included and has access to the resources they need to excel. Family engagement, encouraging parents, caregivers, and family, excuse me, engaging parents, caregivers, and family to encourage students in a rich school setting. And then finally, community partnerships, strengthening and enhancing relationships with community partners in order to support students and schools. So these are the areas that we see as potential areas for, um, strategic work over the next five years for the school system. And what we would like to do now is to reach out to everyone, to hear your voices, to take this brief survey that will allow you to weigh in on each of these priority areas that we identified as to whether you feel strongly that it should be a priority or whether you disagree with that. It will also give you an opportunity to look at some other priority areas that we identified that you might feel should be a top priority, and you'll be, uh, have an opportunity to express that. And then finally, there'll be a space where if none of the areas we have identified are, are sufficient to support what you feel should be a priority, you may write in other areas that you feel should be a priority. So this is the link to the survey, um, I don't think people need to copy it down because it will be distributed through school messenger to families, students, and staff, everyone. Um, the link is also gonna be located on the district website and social media accounts. And we would like to invite everyone to please go participate in that survey, weigh in on what we've identified, and please let us know if you believe it reflects the correct strategic areas for action over the next five years. It will open tomorrow, December 8th, and close December 31st. Um, when it is closed, we will bring the results of that, the voices that weigh in on that survey. Um, we will bring that back to the board and staff, um, in a retreat format in January. And I believe Ms. Bowie is working now to set up that, and we'll let everyone know, um, the time and date for that. Um, and at that point in time, we can use the data that includes everyone's voices on these areas for focus, and once we are able to see what those areas should be, um, then we can begin to develop the actual strategies and action steps to support those. And that part of the work really will move much more quickly once these are identified. But we have felt it's important to take the time to be sure we get the right areas. So, um, we would again appreciate everyone's participation in that survey, even if you have already given us some qualitative data previously. Please take the survey, uh, we want to hear every voice weigh in on the weights of these priorities. Are there questions?
All right, thank you. Uh, any board members have any questions for either member of NPH? Yes, Ms. Crable.
The, um, so I'm looking at your Weeks 21 and 20 for Phase Four, Weeks 21 and 2, 3. What does that translate to in like real weeks, like January, the week of January 4th? Like, for example?
Um, in, in real life, it generally translates, we'd like to leave about three or four weeks for that. We understand that there's a little bit more speed required here because of the, um, need to get the plan, um, at least the priorities and areas for work identified, um, in time for budgeting. So we would expect that to be somewhat compressed and hopefully completed by February. Again, it depends on how long it takes, the, that, those strategies really get developed by the senior staff that are responsible for leading those areas. So, um, it, it depends on how much time it takes them to drill down and develop that.
Okay, other questions? Okay, well, thank you very much. We look forward to, you know, we encourage our community, staff, students, uh, community at large, please put your voice into that survey. Um, as they said, it is going to open tomorrow, and I believe I saw Nancy, it's on, it's gonna be right on our website, and, um, the more voices we get, the better the strategic plan will be. We want to hear from you, so please make sure that you complete that between now and, well, excuse me, between tomorrow and December 31st, right? Thank you very much, Dr. Palmer, Ms. Parks, you guys have a lovely evening, and thank you for sticking around.
Thank you so much.
All right, have a good night. All right, next art, uh, item on the agenda are the local salary schedules for 2021, '22. Ms. Mary Hazel Small, welcome to the microphone with the budget.
Thank you. Um, so you've seen versions of this before, but today we're gonna add some information about the state budget and how it impacts what we are proposing locally. Um, the, what was posted officially last week has since been changed by a, um, um, technical corrections bill. So this version has the original information and some other items in red, just so that you know what's current as of this morning at nine o'clock, so. Um, we're gonna start with, um, the state salary budget update. The, I've sort of separated this between salaries and bonus information because there's a lot of different bonuses in the state budget as well as one that we're doing locally, so it gets a little confusing. So we're gonna go through the state budget, we're gonna go through our local scales, and then we're gonna kind of come back to the same information by employee group, so it's easier to see which employee groups are getting which things. So hopefully that will be, make it a little bit easier. Um, so one thing that is, um, very unique because of the lateness of the state budget is that the salary, um, scales are actually effective, the, the changes made by the state effective January 1, um, and so going forward, that's how we'll pay people on those new scales, including the ones that you approve locally, so that'll be the effective date. But then there will be a bonus, um, for what would have been the salary increase if it had been effective in, um, starting July 1st. So it'll be retro bonus, but you have to be employed, and this is one of the things that changed in the technical corrections bill. So it did say you have to be employed as of January 1. And so now it says that you, um, it does not apply to persons separated from service prior to December 31st, and what that means is a retirees now benefit. And we'll get, anybody that retires as of January 1, whose last day of service was December 31st, will get the retro pay. So there was a lot of confusion about that, so, um, you'll see that over and over on the different pages, but, um, just wanted you, there's a lot of effective dates that affect who gets what. Um, the other thing is that the, um, retirement rate and the, um, health insurance rates also increased, um, effective January 1. They, that is not retro, that's just going forward. Um, and we've already, um, discussed, I believe, that, um, we were hoping for held harmless, which did happen, meaning that, um, the state is not gonna reduce our funding in the current year for the fact that our enrollment is less than their projections for us, and that would have been a significant reduction. It does, it is a planning issue for next year, and that we will lose funding for, um, we were able to, to hire more positions this year to, to help in part of our recovery, but we won't have that ability next year. So we'll, we'll go back to funding on actual enrollment. So for the state bonus, so I've already mentioned that the retro pay bonus, which is the differential between current and new pay scales, and the recommendation is to follow this, you know, regardless of the funding source that your salary comes out of, everybody's paid, you know, on the same salary scale, regardless of funding source, and so the, the, um, my recommendation to you is that you don't have a differential between state paid folks and local. Um, the premium pay bonus is a state initiative, which is $1,000 for all local full-time employees with an additional $500 for employees that make less than $75,000 for the entire year. And, um, that applies to people that are employed as of December 1, a new date. Um, so that's the effective date for that. Um, the, I think in an earlier version, you know, that was, that was, um, January. So now, now it's December, which is, which is helpful. And, um, we did learn today, I don't have it on here, that it does not include longevity, because even though longevity is paid, that's considered a benefit, so it's just, you know, base salary and supplements that, that would determine that $75,000, and who were, who would get the $1,500 versus the $1,000. Um, the state is paying this regardless of the funding source of employees. So this is gonna be paid for all of our employees with state funds, so, um, or federal funds that are allotted to the state. For teachers only, there's also a COVID bonus, and the clarification received today is that is teachers and certified instructional support. So all the licensed employees that, um, work in the school, um, not, not administrators, but licensed employees that are in the classroom and supporting the classroom, they would get a $1,000 bonus if we have documentation that they receive training associated with COVID-19, um, and that is something HR will be working to get the documentation for the schools, because there's been lots of training. And anytime from the beginning of COVID through the end of this month, training would count, and then employees would be eligible for that bonus. All teachers also get a $300, will get a $300 bonus. Um, you may remember that prior to COVID, um, there were performance bonuses for teachers third through eighth grade. Um, because we don't have that information at this point, um, the state is using that recurring state funding to just pay, um, a flat rate bonus to all the teachers. Um, the, the second year of the binding budget, because this is a two-year budget, they'll, it will, um, return to, um, performance-based bonuses. So the $300 is one time for this year only. Also, advanced course and CTE bonuses based on the test information that we will have, um, for secondary, that we do have for the secondary schools for, um, last spring testing, um, will be paid in, they said today, January, February, what, we don't have the information from them, but once they send the information as to who's eligible, we will pay that. Um, principals, similar to teachers, in that they're not doing performance pay for, for principals. This year it'll be a one-time bonus of $1,800, next year it goes back to performance pay. Yes, ma'am?
Okay, so this is December the 1st that they're gonna be paying this? As opposed to the January the 1st dead?
The, none of, none of the, the bonuses will be paid in December that are part of the state budget. They'll be paid in January. The effective date is when you're employed by, they, they move the effective date is when you were employed by. So there's just no way we can get all the information that we need, need to document everything. we need, need to document everything, like, we won't even have the documentation on the, the advanced course and CTE from DPI, they said till January or February. So, the, the only ones that are possibly paid in February would be those two. The rest of them will be paid in January.
Thank you.
Okay, so switching gears to salaries, so the non-certified personnel, the, the state, for the next two years, there will be increases at the higher of 2.5% or whatever it takes to achieve a minimum of $13, $13 an hour for this year, going to $15 the next year. And we'll get to our proposals a little bit later. We did the 13 last, two years ago, and our recommendation is using that same money they're giving other counties to get to 13, for us to get 14. So, that, that is, that'll come in just a moment, but just, just to understand where that funding is coming from. Okay, so, the, I lost my place, give me a minute. Okay, there we go, thank you. Central, I'm looking at the wrong slide. Central office administrators, 2.5% for each year of the biennial. Teachers and instructional support salaries, they're increasing the, the base scale, it's the same format, 1.3%, and then there's a step increase, but not every step on the teacher's scale has an increase. So, there, that means that the low, the low end for teachers is 1.3%, and the high end is 5.4, if there's also a step in there. Those are published, and somewhere in the presentation, I have a link to the state salary schedules, and you can look at those. School count, they also, school counselors, psychologists, speech, language pathologists, and audiologists, all of those schedules are tied, they're based on the teacher's schedule, but they're a little bit higher. So, for counselors, they, they're changing it to a, an additional $100 a month built into their salary schedule, so now there's a new salary schedule. So, it's what they would get as a master's level teacher, but then, you have to have masters to be in that job, and then you would also get $100 more a month. Psychologist, speech, and audiologist, theirs is tied to, their, their scale starts at what would be a six-year teacher, and then they're adding, so they get the same raises teachers, plus an additional $350 a month added to their salary. Assistant principals, it is the same as the teachers, their scale's just 19% higher, so they would have an average increase, just like teachers, of 2.5%. And principals, their, their base scale is going up 2.5% for each year of the biennial. So, questions on the salary?
Mary Hazel?
Oh, so, is, when we're looking at these state salary increases, is, is there an amount that we can't go higher than because of state salary has some sort of limit? I'm, I'm trying to understand this, and read the legislation, it's too hard.
When we're talking about certified staff who are, whose base salaries are paid on state schedules, then we follow the schedules, and then you can supplement that, which we do, so we have a supplement for principals and a supplement for teachers. For non-certified and central office administrator, there are ranges, and they recommend that you stay within the ranges. There are certain positions that they will not let you use state money if you go over, so, so specifically bus drivers and, and TAs, and there's a few others that they check, and so you could do it with local, but you can't go over those ranges with state funds, and most of those employees are state funded. So, one of the things that we are allowed to do with our local ESAR funding is bonuses for certain purposes that meet the guidelines of, of, there are several categories that we're allowed to spend ESAR funds on. And so, back in, I really lost count, but I believe it might have been October, we brought to you this proposal that we were going to submit, that we have submitted now, to, to use the funds for a school support bonus of $1,000, and that will be paid, the board had already approved that, this is just informational now, that will be paid on December 15th to the employees that are listed there, clerical support, instructional support in schools, and instructional support personnel that are more system-wide, that are serving schools, so, you know, the, the bus drivers, child nutrition workers, custodians, skills trade, that group, so that, that's $1,000 each, and that's one time to be paid on 15th.
So, um... But Mary Hazel, just to clarify, so the folks that are listed under this eligible employee categories, they are going to be receiving a $1,000 bonus in December from ESAR funds?
From our local ESAR.
Local ESAR funds. In January, they will be receiving, for most of the people that we've heard from, because they're under $75,000, they're going to receive another $1,500 from the state funds.
That is correct.
Right, so in total, we're looking at $2,500 bonus for the non-certified positions, essentially.
Yeah, and not, not every employee falls in every category, and we'll look at that at the end, but for most, that is true. So, now going to our local salary schedules, so this is the non-certified salary schedule, and it's really hard to read, so kind of focus on the blue section. You have attached the 22-page salary schedules for all the different categories, but the, the highlights of this are the $15 minimum, which will be going to, we know will be going to, $14 minimum going to 15 the second year, so this is, this year's salary schedule, starting in January with, and this is what we will determine what that retro bonus is based on. So, the, the check starting in January will be based on these salaries, and then we'll go back and calculate the difference of what it would have been if they'd had it since July. There are 31% steps, there are, we're also doing a two-step increase to catch up for the fact that without a state budget last year, that there was a step increase for teachers, but there was not one for non-certified, so people will move two steps if they've been with us, you know, at least two years. There's a 2.5% minimum, the average increase is 8.5, and the following year, and I don't know what the actual schedule would look like, but the, the following year, the state minimum will go to $15 an hour.
And when you say for the, for the year 2023, we're actually looking at, that would be June 1 of this year, so...
The, the, FY '23 starts in July...
July 1.
Of '22, and goes to June of '23, and that's already approved by the state in the budget that that will go up this coming July or August for 10 months.
So, six months from now, that's going to go to the 15-an-hour minimum?
Yes.
Yes.
So, wait, there was two, I don't know.
Ms. Cribble and then Ms. Justice.
So, roughly, if we were to go 15 now and then 16 in six months, what does that look, is that like a million dollars, you know, $5 million or...
I thought you might ask, and so, right before I came up, I glanced at some early calculations, and I am, this is so rough that I will not let you quote me on it.
Rough is fine.
At, at a minimum, $4 million, probably $4 to $5 million more of, every year, and continuing. I just haven't calculated it on, we also have new retirement rates, so I, that is very, very rough, but just in case you ask.
All right, Ms. Justice and then Mr. Wildebore.
Well, I'm just going to go ahead and ask about the $17, would that be double the amount, the roughness?
You really, you would think, but not necessarily, because it really depends on where people are moving to, you know, if, if you just went to, one of the questions is, if you, if you went to 15, would you just say that, would you just compress the steps, and would you move everything to 15, and then the ones above that would just get, would just get, you know, the raise that was proposed, or would you somehow modify that? I know that HR is currently doing a salary study, where we, I think it would be better to have a little bit more thoughtful planning on how you implement that, so that you don't end up in a situation where people don't get step increases for the next 10 years, either.
Well, that makes sense.
And so, it, for two reasons, one, we need to figure out how to fund it, but, but also to figure out how best, if, if that is something the board want, would want to do, I feel like we would need to, to bring back a different plan, and not just, just approve it without looking into exactly how much it costs, and then how, how it would affect people.
And that's actually, I think, something you brought up a couple years ago, about the $15 an hour when the state had done it, and we never got a chance to do that, so...
That is true.
Yes, and thank you.
When we did our, our budget for FY '19, that was the year that we went to minimum 13, the state went to 15 for all other state employees that year. So, at the time, it didn't happen for school employees, because it was too expensive statewide to do, so they wanted to come up with a plan to do it every time.
Interesting how that worked out.
Let's go to Mr. Wildebore.
So, well, I wanted to complete that question. So, if it was the will of the board, if we requested that kind of study for the $17 an hour and, and accompanying steps to make it equitable and fair, that, that is something you could do, correct?
I'm saying we certainly could come up with salary scales, whether or not, how it would be funded would be another issue for the board, so we would have to figure out.
Being that we're not a taxing body, we would have to figure out where it's going to be.
Well, I'm just, I'm asking a question.
Which would mean relationships that we're building with county commissioners.
You got to start somewhere.
And just remember, our ADM will change, and so you're going to get a decrease in funding next year. So, the funding, the funding that you have, I think is $26,400 some...
The state, we receive over six, like, $6,500 from state, and then county is, I don't remember the exact number, $3,400, something like that per student. So, that, that will go down for the law.
What's more time, you got to start somewhere, that's why I was started a couple years ago, and it never happened.
Mr. Wildebore and then Mr. McManus.
All right. First off, I want to say that I think the TAs and bus drivers are very, very valuable, I mean, we need them, I mean, there's no doubt in my mind. And in my days as a principal, I remember that, that, you know, you have different pots of money, but I know we have added several people at the central office. Is that, is that money fluid, where we could move some of that money if we didn't hire, say, as many people at central office and move somebody down? Not that we will lose anybody at central, but I mean, maybe in the future.
So, I will say that the funding we do have is currently budgeted, we, we do expect to, there's, there's been a lot of discussion tonight about ESAR funding, and can we use it for salaries? We, we can, we can put positions, we could add positions in ESAR funding, but you can't use ESAR funding to pay raises for employees that are not funded by ESAR, that's, that's not allowable. So, I don't know if that kind of gets to what your question is, so, you know, ultimately, when the, you know, the budget was proposed and approved by the board, that those, those are the positions, but certainly every year, it's up to the board which positions to have and, and what changes to make, whether it's salary or, or changes in allotment formulas or, or numbers of the position in central office. That certainly is at the board's discretion, but it's kind of hard to say, do a comparable without specifics.
That money could possibly be moved from here to here, where the rubber meets the road.
So, I think what you're saying is, so the, the positions in, that are, the one, two positions that are in central office actually do support the schools, and I think individuals, don't understand, like, we fund more than what the state gives us, so the state gives us an allocation of, for state funding, for every school, there's an allotment. We go above and beyond to give that money. So, I don't know if individuals, and I do plan for us to have, to give to the board at our next meeting, an allocation of how we allocate to the school, because we are well over what the state offers, and so, when we are giving, so for instance, right now in one of the elementary and forest schools, we have one principal, we have added a retired principal and an assistant principal. There are three administrators in that one school, three. And we've also given them Dr. Pinto, who is also an administrator, who was in the, at the central office, who's also in their school, in addition to giving a coach to the principal, and giving five days of our lead teachers, so they go over. And so, we've given, that's just one example of what we've done, and so, when we say that it's all at the central office, that's actually not true. We give above and beyond, and other schools aren't getting that, but I'm definitely going to provide toward the, the board at our next board meeting, how we allot and how we're above of what the state is actually asking for, because I don't think, I don't think everyone sees that. It's, it, I want to clear up that, that myth, that there are more individuals at the, the central office.
Mr. McManus and then Mr. Bullier. Yes, Mr. McManus?
It, it's still, would you retire from the state, is your four, is it still your four highest consecutive years of pay that determines your retirement?
It is, it is.
It is.
It's an average of the four highest.
Highest consecutive years. So, if someone was making X amount of dollars, and then they had to lose a portion of that, they've made their retirement until they catch up or surpass, which then you got to stay four years for that to average out. So, so far, we're kind of agreeable. So, to give a raise to our classified employees, we would either have to go to ESAR funds, which was brought up by county commissioner, so we need to address it, it's not going away, but they don't last except through '23.
But we can't, we can't give a raise.
You can't do a raise for a position paid by other funding sources.
Okay, so we can't, then we need to tell everybody why we can't use that money, if that's accurate. Number two, that that means that the board would have to look into the budget.
Yes.
And that would, only way we could do a reoccurring to keep that every year.
That's correct.
Okay.
And, and it is, I'm sorry.
So, it would come for the board, you, in our budget season, you would have to ask our local funds, so you'd have to go to the commissioners and ask. State is already set, federal's already set. The only way you would have to do it is to make a request to the commissioners of how many, how much, how many millions you would need for the next...
And that came up at the county commissioner meeting with us, and I think we heard that they said, because they had given so much, that they don't have it right now. Also, if I understand correctly, the state's given us, how much per student, you say, 80?
I, I don't remember the exact number, off the top of my head right now, but it's, it's in the, it depends on which, which students, but it's, it's probably in the 6,000 to 7,000 per student range.
And, and the county commissioners are about 35, 3600. So, we're getting almost $11,000 between the state and the county per student.
And, and federal, yes.
And so, remember that every time we lose a student, we're losing that money.
That is true.
And so, I just want the public to understand that it's not as simple as us saying, because if we were, I, we'd give a raise today, and, and we need to look at that, and we need to discuss and open how we can do it and why we can do it, or why we can't do it, and we need to have that discussion, because everyone is on a different plateau, and everybody just thinks the board says, we're going to do it, and it's magic, it's not.
I, I would just add to that, that currently, we're about 85, 86% of our budget is on salaries and benefits, and, and y'all don't control the benefit rate, but just the retirement contribution, you know, is almost to 25% for every dollar salary we're putting in, and so there's these hidden costs that make it difficult. So, I'm not saying it's not important, and that, you know, you don't want to plan to move forward, but those are all the things you have to take into consideration.
All right, hold on, it's Mr. Bullier's turn, and then we'll come back to you, Ms. Justice.
Yep, thank you very much, this is kind of a thick mask, so I'll put it down briefly. First, I just wanted to thank the people who continue to show up and advocate for themselves, because I see what you do, and I definitely appreciate it, and I know this board does as well, it's, it's yeoman's work, it is God's work, it's really important stuff, so I'm, I'm very grateful. And, you know, I know we have the salary study coming out, is there an ETA on that?
ETA.
An, yeah, an ETA, on when that...
Budgetary.
Everyone, right before budgeting. So, I mean, I, I understand what Mr. McManus is saying, we, I mean, I personally will commit to do everything that I possibly can to make sure that, you know, you have the funds you need to live a good life and to feel like you are valued, because I know how important that is, but we're not a taxing authority, so we really have to do it as a team, we have to do it together, and it's going to take all of us talking to our commissioners and our state delegation to work hard to get this done.
Okay.
All right, Ms. Justice?
And, and basically, you first need to plan, right? You need to see what you need, and you need to how, figure out how to get there, and then you need to look at the whole budget, and literally pick out if you decide to do something, correct? And that's what we need to start with, first we need to have, figure out how to get there.
I, I would imagine that, that salaries will be a big part of, of initiatives in the upcoming budget, just based on everything we've heard.
But, but you can, but you yourself can look at the $17 and figure out how, just to start with and then move forward, and then we can look at the budget and everything and how it's spent, like somebody brought up central office, there's other areas, a lot of other areas that could possibly be looked at that I have in the past, and I would love to bring this up during budget discussions.
And, and I think another important point is, because we know, we're in a very unique position that we haven't been in in four or five years, that we know next year's state funding, and it really is hard to build a, a local budget when you don't know local or state funding, when we have to do it, so...
That's different.
Because we're a majority, most of our funding is state, that this will make this year's budget planning a little easier, so that you know going in how much money you can expect, so...
All right. Mary Hazel, I know that you still have a bunch of slides here, so we will let it go.
I'll try to talk fast, but...
We'll try and hold, we'll try and hold questions now until the end, we need some clarification there. Thank you.
So, bus, I want to say, sorry. Bus drivers, the minimum is 15, you, you remember, two years ago, we went to a minimum of 14 for them. They have a 15-step scale, which is less steps, but it gets them to the top of the state range at, at step 15, and the average increase there is 7%. Child nutrition, now, a lot of child nutrition employees are on the non-certified scale. This is the, a separate scale that was developed a few years ago, it used to be flat rate, these are the part-time helpers that are not... This is the, a separate scale that was developed a few years ago. It used to be flat rate. These are the part-time helpers that are not. They don't get benefits. It's less than 20-hour-a-week employees. And so it was raised to 12 an hour. We're proposing 13. Next year's raise for them will, will eliminate the scale. It'll go to 15 next year. So the scale's still there, and, you know, there's stuff increases in the same format as the others, but just by looking at it, you can see the top of the scale's 14, and next year, the minimum will be 15. So, you know, part of next year's planning will be, you know, how to handle this group of employees. But we know right now that it will be the minimum of 13 this year and 15 next year. Central office administrator, the proposal was to provide more equity with school, with school administrators, and also created a category of, with this particular state scale, you, you can locally define what every level of administrator is. So, you know, in our county, we've got the level one is, you know, supervisor, supervisor two, assistant director, tech specialist, pre-K director is, was inserted, and now director and executive director. And so this is also 31% steps. And part of what we're doing with this, you may remember from, from previous discussions, is we had a very compressed scale that we've been trying over several years to eliminate from the recession. And so this is getting us back to where all of our steps are even. And so this is a bit, a little bit higher increase, just, but it's certainly not for everybody. It's an average. Some folks, you know, that are, that near the top of the scale, they'll, their increase would be two and a half. But those further back, getting two steps would be more, or those moving from one category to another.
Can you, can you speak to the excludes contracted senior staff, please, who that refers to and who is excluded from this? It's on the, the very bottom end of the calendar.
Yes, thank you. I just skipped right over that, because I'm trying to hurry. So this is for, for folks that don't have a contract. So the contracted senior staff, it says in their contract that they get an average of, their raise would be equal to that of an average teacher, which we now know from the previous slide is two and a half percent. So these, this average increase shown here does not apply to senior staff.
So senior staff, meaning the folks that are sitting here.
These, these. Subs and hourly. And the, Dr. Barnes brought back, I don't really know. I think it was the second meeting of October, possibly, we increased the instructional subs. I have it listed here, just because it's part of the same scale. One number that's in red was, was part of what was changed by the state, and they, I had, my estimate was close to that number, but they announced today that the maximum is $161. That's for a long-term license sub. And then the tutors, the non-instructural substitutes, we're, we're taking all those to a minimum of 13. But also, some of them are already higher, and, and they were slightly adjusted. And so this is, those rates are what you have seen before. So now, there's nothing new on the next few slides. I'm just gonna explain it a little differently, so it might be easier for employees trying to figure out how this affects them. They would, they could look at a couple of slides and know what to expect. So once again, this is kind of repeat, the salary increases go into effect January 1. If you were employed as of December 31st, you're gonna get that retro adjustment, assuming you were here, you know, since July, for whatever that bonus would have been. We will pay those bonuses in January. The, let's skip over the next. This is different. So we had said before that it would be subject to retirement contributions, which is true, because this is considered salary. But there was clarification today that, that because it's salary, it's not supplement. Most times bonuses are supplemental wages, and they're taxed at that higher flat rate. But they, they clarified today that these are considered salary and not supplemental wages, so it won't be taxed at the high rate, which is favorable to employees. So that's just the retro bonus. All the other bonuses won't be subject to retirement, meaning the employee doesn't have to pay their 6%, but they will, it will be taxed at the high rate, so it's kind of six, one and a half dozen of the other. But the teachers and instructional support, this is just summarizing their salary schedule increases. And this is where the link that I mentioned before to the new salary schedule is. So employees, this, this presentation is attached to the board agenda, and you can link there, or you can just go on either our website or the state's and, and link to this. The, the public pay, the public finance page has a link to the salary schedules. For bonuses for teachers and instructional support, there's the premium bonus that applies to all the state employees, 500 or 1,500, if you make less than 75,000 a year. They also, there's a COVID training bonus for the teachers and instructional, certified instructional support. They also get the 300 a year, and then depending on what they teach and what the, the student grades were, they may get those last two. For school administrators, they're getting the, I lost my place. Salary increases, the premium bonus, the assistant principals, they're getting the, basically, the, the same increase as teachers, percentage-wise. Principal salaries is a little bit more detail for them, and to, part of their salary is based on how many students are at their school. So there's some adjustments, and it tells them how to calculate that. Some little details there. But the principal bonus is 1,800, and then there's a link to their salary schedule as well. For non-certified, this is the same information that was on the slide that, that had that sample. So it, it goes through the change in the pay scales, but also which bonuses apply to them. So we're looking at the retro bonus, the premium pay bonus. And for those specific employees that we talked about, that were on that, that slide, we're getting the local ESRA school support bonus. That's another 1,000, and that's the only one that's gonna be paid this month. Bus drivers, the summary of the salary increases, and then those same bonuses that were, pretty much the same as the last page in terms of bonuses. The child nutrition, the only difference is you have to be full-time to get the, the state premium bonus, the $1,500 one. And so that would not apply to our part-time folks that were, they're not considered permanent employees. Same thing here, a summary of the salary schedule for central office and changes, and then that they would be eligible for the retro bonus and the premium pay bonus. And that is.
Yeah, can I quickly ask a question?
Yes, ma'am.
All right. The ESRA funds, the bonuses that aren't gonna be paid until January, now, some of the bonuses are gonna be paid this month, correct?
The, the locally. The local initiative ESRA funds, I'm trying to find it real quick, is the one that we're paying in December, on December 15.
Right, and that's to who?
That is to this employee group, which is, let's see if I can read it. So it's school-based, classified, clerical, instructional support. So it's gonna be the TAs. I'm trying to think of the other examples of.
Bus driver, eight child nutrition workers.
Contestants.
Yeah, I'm trying to think of the other school-based classifieds, so maybe some of, there's some other titles like liaisons, those kinds of things.
So certified don't get, certified don't receive any ESRA funds this, in that group?
Not, not with this. They're part of the state funded, funding bonuses are ESRA fund, or state, in the state ESRA budget.
In, in January.
It gets confusing. Yeah, that's in January.
So, so the, so the local certified staff aren't getting any budgets, any bonuses this month?
No. No one is, because this all just happened, and we're still getting, clearly, even today, the, like, I don't even, I'm not even positive that the governor signed the technical correction bill. As of this morning, he hadn't, but I'm really hoping he signs it today.
Well, could our local ESRA funds been used for certified?
Say that again?
Could our local ES, could our local ESRA funds been used to pay certified staff this month?
The board had not approved any bonuses for them.
But they did for the classified. So nobody brought that in front of us?
There, there was no proposal, this was the only ESRA proposal that we considered for bonuses.
Remember, our commissioners gave our teachers or created a supplement for them to be the highest paid in the state.
That was.
But however, our classified clerical support, instructional support, they didn't receive anything.
Ms. Justice, we've also been presented this information multiple times. This isn't the first time this is coming out.
I just, I'm asking.
We've approved this.
We approved the classified. At the time, I did not, okay, we know that the teachers have got the highest in the state. You keep saying that over and over again. But there's all, multiple issues or situations that could have been discussed at the time. I'm concerned about the certified staff. This has been a really rough year for everybody, and even with that supplement, I'm concerned because I, it would have been something, and I did try to bring it up, I believe, if I remember right, that we should have possibly put on the agenda and discussed, maybe even voted on. Just, just because I don't think that the TAs are gonna, or not just the TAs, that the classified staff would begrudge some kind of supplement for Christmas for our certified teachers, a small one, a bonus. They wouldn't have begrudged that. That's my take on it.
Any other questions? All right, any other questions or comments? Yes, Ms. Craybill.
So is this the correct time to, tell me if this is not the correct time to ask this question, because, and I will withdraw it till the correct time. But when we're looking at some of the supplements that we took, we took away from teachers, like lead teachers and their national board certified, because we needed to pay for them out of a different category, or priority schools that get the extra pay for being there, and then the IRS supplement, you know, that lead teachers.
That's not a part of this, but that is part of when we implemented last July, the new supplement schedule. And so I can address part of it, just from memory. But the, prior to that, there was a, a base supplement schedule.
Right.
And then a targeted supplement schedule that was $2,000 higher per teacher at five specific schools. What was being proposed was higher than that by at least 2,000. So all those employees at the targeted schools also got an increase. It just, it wasn't, they didn't, we didn't keep the targeted. The plan was to develop, and I know that is part of what, what Human Resources will be working on for next year, is a, I can't think of the right word with it.
Pre-instatement.
Help me, Dr. Faust, a incentive, not incentive, but performance-based. Bonus structure, rather than just identifying certain schools and paying them higher.
So you're talking about performance as the outcomes for the teachers, as opposed to the school situation where they're, I mean, obviously, they're struggling situations that you're not gonna get the outcomes that necessarily are equitable to what they're working with. Is that what you're talking about?
Well, this, this is the salary schedule the board approved, you know, last spring. And so, you know, if you want, if it's something you want to look at changing, you know, we certainly could bring it back in the future, but that's already been approved and implemented.
No, I was talking about next year is what you, yeah.
So then, the appropriate time to ask my question again would be when we're looking at the, the budget for next year.
Yeah, but you, I mean, you can always ask. It might be, I might have better answers.
Well, I want to ask it at a time where we can actually, you know, do something about it.
Certainly.
All right, so at this point, the request is approval of the salary schedule as presented. Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Bullier. Is there a second? All right, I'll second. Any discussion?
Obviously, it's gonna be this way without further study. We don't know what it would mean to be able to bump up the salary schedule, because we do need study first, as you brought up. At the same time, this is, I mean, we're gonna have to approve it for them to even get the 14, correct?
For us to pay any increases, we're gonna need.
We have to approve.
Approval of something, yes.
So otherwise, it'll stay with the state.
It stays where it is, yes.
What the state says.
Yes, ma'am.
So we're sort of between a rock and a hard place for those of us that have wished we'd been more proactive, but have been trying to get information, been very difficult. Thank you.
All right, let's go ahead, and I guess, Ms. Bowie, can we do a roll call on this? Motion is to approve the salary schedule as presented.
Ms. Adams?
Aye.
Mr. Bullier?
Aye.
Ms. Justice?
Aye.
Ms. Craybill?
Aye.
Mr. McManus?
Aye.
Ms. Walker?
Yes.
And Mr. Wildeavor.
All right, salary schedule's approved, seven to zero, thank you, Miss Small. Our next item on the agenda, the NHCS Employee Climate Survey Update. Mr. Smith, welcome to the microphone.
Good evening again. I'll be brief. Since our last meeting, we developed two separate surveys, one for classified and one for certified staff. Along the way, we took refinements that you suggested to include the most recent input as of this afternoon, and are now ready to launch the surveys as, as quickly as this evening, assuming you approve. Questions were derived from NCDPI climate surveys. Each survey is 30 questions in length, with the opportunity to write in if desired. All responses will be completely anonymous, and it'll be located behind our staff portal to ensure the integrity of the results. And as I'm talking, Anita's driving and will pull up where folks will find the survey. All staff logging into the portal, they'll meet a pop-up encouraging their participation, and we'll also spread the word with all district emails, the board report at the conclusion of this meeting that we send out, as well as our internal newsletter. I'd suggest that we run the survey for the remainder of the month of December, close it out on the 31st, and then I'll export those results to the board the first week of January. With that, I'll turn it over to the board for any further questions or refinement, but, but we're ready to go with your approval.
All right, Ms. Craybill?
So how are we going to ensure that, that people understand there's two surveys going on? We've got our strategic plan survey open tomorrow through the end of the month, and then we've got our climate survey.
Right. So with regard to the strategic plan survey, and we're using the, utilizing the same software on our end, so just a matter of clarification, we procured a Survey Monkey contract, if you will, or license to be able to survey that number of folks. It was approximately $300. So we can, we can survey and survey and survey. So the strategic plan are utilizing some of that capability. That'll be widely broadcasted on our website to the public. However, folks will have to get behind the, the staff portal to access the NHCS, or as you were, the, the classified and certified surveys. There, it's probably impossible to guarantee absolute fidelity, but if, for example, we get 6,000 responses to our staff survey, we know that, that it's been compromised.
Yeah, so, but you'll, they, we'll be able to tell, like, in some subject line?
Absolutely.
You, staff, this is one.
Mm-hmm.
And then, okay.
Yes, ma'am.
All right, any other questions or comments? All right, we look forward to seeing the results. Thank you very much, and thank you for hearing the feedback and flexing with the needs, desires, and wants of the board to make this the most robust survey that we can to get a good barometer of where our staff is right now.
Absolutely, it's my pleasure.
Thank you.
I'm gonna stay up here for the next topic as well.
Oh, yes, public records. Next item, public records, retention, release, and disposition. This is regarding Policy 5070, which was approved a few months ago. So please, take it away.
So as Anita's pulling up our next request portal, I did just want to take the opportunity to introduce the public records request software. It's known as Next Request. Folks can find it on our website, and she'll walk you through it just briefly. But it will allow us to move on from rudimentary spreadsheets and, and data keeping to a more streamlined and efficient way to, to both solicit, respond to public records requests. There, there's a level of transparency available to the public. Anita, if you could, just go to search, I'm sorry, back up. As well as it improves the efficiency on the staff side to aggregate the information for said requests. And so every open request that we have currently is uploaded. I think we've got approximately 38 here. Eight have been closed out, 30 remain in queue. To date this year, we've closed out approximately 100 public records requests, the majority of which do not require redaction and review, and in that, they're, they're closed out faster. So with that, I understand this is a board discussion item. I'll happily answer any questions you have.
All right, Ms. Justice.
Yes, I'm not even sure where to bring this up. At this point, are we still charging people that, I mean, this is, I know, it's part of the same topic, though. Are we still charging people that made public record requests before we changed the system to start charging them? Are we still doing that?
So a point, a few points of clarification, if I may. We've not received or charged any, we've not received any money to, to date, $0 to date, to close out public records requests. Some of the requests that existed prior to the implementation of the policy were so large in scope to the tune of millions of pages necessary for redaction, that it hasn't been started yet. And so with regard to the policy, the board passed Policy 5070. We enforce and apply, or comply with Policy 5070. And with regard to necessary interpretation around these incidents, we would refer to the board attorney to help us clarify. And that's where we are now. So the answer is, there are two, if I'm not mistaken, two requests that pertain to what you're speaking of. And the estimate so far is, it's in the six figures, the time necessary to.
Really?
Review and redact all of that information to be in compliance with North Carolina law. So in that, it's in six figures, we defer to the attorneys in the best way to move forward, because it's certainly not a cost that we immediately want to pass on to the district. And so, but just to be clear, of the 130-some-odd requests, at least this year that I'm aware of, that we are addressing or closing out, the specific ones that may pertain to your question are, are two, and they exceed 1 million individual email pages that require review and redaction. And anything additional, I'd have to refer to.
Okay, well, well, thank you for that. Also, along the same question, what about, we keep getting these mails about people that had asked, and they still haven't gotten them, and it's been for months, and I'm not talking about that great number of ones. I'm talking about why is it that they're not getting these requests they had. I'm talking about why is it that they're not getting these requests they had months ago? They just keep asking us, and so, I just wanted to know what's going on, because, you know, I have no answer.
Sure, absolutely. So, again, the vast, the vast majority of public records requests that come in, that we can all now see, are not message or email specific. They're specific contracts or presentations or data points that can be easily garnered. And so, we do begin to address them when they come in. If they are specific, however, to email requests or messages or, you know, items that, based on North Carolina public records law, require redaction, we do forward that batch over to Tharrington Smith for review and redaction. We do not have that capability in-house as of yet. This software allows a rudimentary element of redaction, but we don't have the personnel or the training. And so, Tharrington Smith will provide us with updates along the way. Now, if, to your point, there is a small public records request, smaller in scope, that came in several months ago, and it hasn't been closed out, it may be because there's a backlog of review and redaction ahead of that. But again, I would defer to them for exactly why.
I just know we keep getting them, and I'm, why they keep asking us, and I have no idea, and I'm trying to find out why. Why they're not getting their requests done. They're not, they're not the large ones, and they're old, the old requests.
So, I think if you'll forward that to the communications, and they can certainly check with us if it's one that our office has. You, you have, this has been a year of unprecedented public records requests. And, and our office, again, we're speaking of thousands and thousands of pages, because when someone requests emails, we have to go through and, you know, determine which ones are public records. So, it is, it's something I've never seen before in 14 years.
Well, what I'm talking about, because they're specific, we read them, they say there's only a couple. I mean, they're not, I'm not talking about the thousands of ones.
Okay.
I'm talking the ones that say, like, a week, there's a couple that I want. And this has been going on, I'm getting tired of getting these emails, honestly. I want an explanation. So, I just send them to the people. I don't know what the problem is.
Well, we're sending them as rapidly as we can. As a matter of fact, if the board will allow, Anita, if you don't mind, pull up 2129, if you will, click on the actual number. And the capability here will allow us to, say it's not completely closed out, I'll just, I'll use this one as an example, because it's large in scope and not yet closed. And so, and you see under the documents there, again, available to all, and Mr. Bullier, we'll just use you as an example, these are your emails, right? These are three batches. They're thousands of pages, but they're, they're there for public inspection, they're there for all to see. So, we certainly want to provide updates, and so, allow us to update in real time as we get information back or redacted, and again, for the public to inspect, as is their right.
Any other questions or comments?
Didn't ask any.
Okay, we thank you for that update, and excited about the software. It's nice to be able to see that it's the ease and streamlining of the process. So, thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, next item on the agenda, policies for second reading. Mr. Bullier?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. So, the only policy that I know there was disagreement on during the first reading of these policies was the policy on facility naming. Didn't know if anybody wanted to have any further discussion on that, but I certainly wanted to pull it out to allow for a roll call vote, if there is no objection. Mr. Wildebohr?
If I would, I actually ran that meeting, so I would like to mention that what we did in that, the policy that Mr. Bullier is referring to, we did change the wording on 9300 from, because there was a lot of discussion before, as he said, he was right on, right around point there, that new or renamed facilities may be named only for geographic terms or mascots, where the wording before actually said with words or terms that have meaning for a given school. And that was actually my suggestion, that if we're going to say, you know, if we don't want to, you know, basically clarify it, so it was more clear.
And I, I saw snippets, parts of that discussion, and that actually had to do with what happened with the Laney football field.
Exactly.
Which was, really, during the discussion, that didn't come up, but yet during your policy meeting, one of the members of the policy board said, oh, if we, somebody has a million dollars, then we'll name it after them. And we're, we were talking about naming it after an educator, a respected educator. And so, there seems to be some kind of problem here with inconsistency and actually hypocrisy. So, we need to clarify this, either take it out, or go back to naming it after people, and including teachers, not just millionaires. So, we need this straightened out.
So, are you wanting to pull it out, or since that edit's been made, do we just want to go ahead?
No, no, I wanted to pull it out, to vote for it. It was discussed quite a bit at the last meeting. And so, I, I think it's ready for a vote, but I know there's disagreement. So, I wanted everybody to vote as they please.
Go ahead.
Example.
Sure. So, first, I will entertain a motion to accept policy, all of the policies listed, with the exception of 9300.
All right, is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Craybill. Any other discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Policies are approved, with the exception of pulling out of 9300.
Now, just ask for a motion to approve Policy 9300 as amended.
All right, is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Craybill. Ms. Craybill?
I didn't hear what he said.
It's voting on 9300 as amended.
Okay, and how was it amended? Where it read it?
It's, it's right on the computer.
Pull it up, and you'll see the.
I'm trying.
Ms. Justice, basically, we've replaced the words with words or terms that have meaning for a given school, which we had all discussed could possibly be a person's name, with only the word mascot. That was, that was a change, to try to, you know, to make it clearer.
Okay, thank you.
All right, Ms., Ms. Bowie, could you please just do a roll call, vote for this?
Ms. Adams?
Oh, wait, I'm sorry, hold on. Do we have a second? Yes, Ms. Craybill, any other discussion? All right.
Ms. Adams?
Aye.
Mr. Bullier?
Aye.
Ms. Justice?
No.
Ms. Craybill?
Aye.
Mr. McManus?
Yes.
Ms. Walker?
Yes.
Mr. Wildebohr?
No.
All right, policy is approved, five to two. Thank you very much. Moving along to the next item that is on the agenda, which is Policy 2120. Tonight, we are going to be electing a new chair and vice chair, and I think it is a good time for us to review Policy 2120, the Code of Ethics for our school board members. We had a few people speak to this, this evening, but I just wanted to remind all of our board members, as we set the tone for a new year, who are we trying to be? How are we going to present ourselves? And there have been some behaviors that have occurred that I think are pressing the line of this policy. And I think that as a board, we need to be cognizant of it. We need to be aware of what we are here to do, and how we are to be conducting ourselves. And so, if there's any other comments regarding this, I'm happy to open the floor to anyone else that has anything to say about that. But I just think it's important that we bring attention to this as we move into a new year, new tone.
Madam Chair.
Mr. Bullier?
Yeah, thank you. You know, we have a lot of important things going on, and, you know, routinely, we have board members who violate the law, openly flaunt, you know, personnel law. It's frustrating. I would use the phrase oppressive. It's a, it's a hostile work environment for some of the people that we supervise, and it's really disturbing. It's upsetting, and it just distracts from our work. And you have, you know, add to that, you have people going on Facebook and saying, you know, awful things about supporters of Donald Trump, or whoever, forgetting that thousands of our employees and tens of thousands of our students, you know, are followers of a different ideology or a different idea. And, you know, I would just ask, how can you sit in a meeting, you know, to, when you hear about a suspension of an employee, or you hear about an expulsion of a student, and, you know, how, if you are that person, how can you have confidence that the person judging you hasn't already judged you and damned you? And I, I just get very frustrated with that type of stuff. We need to be better than that. You know, we need to stop believing on social media and start, you know, governing effectively and ethically.
Thank you. Anyone else?
I, I just had a couple ones that, that spoke to me when I, when I, I wasn't certain why we were looking at this, but I looked at the, the policy again. And if you look in the second section, where it says, "Specific Board Member Commitments," the, the ones that, that struck me as ones that, you know, perhaps we, I, I want to take inventory of, and other board members are welcome to do that as well as they see fit. But number one, item number one, attend all regularly scheduled board meetings insofar as possible, and become informed concerning the issues to be considered at our meetings. And I put, AKA, read all our documents before we go to meetings. The third one, allow controversial issues to be presented and considered fairly and without bias. I think we need to definitely work on that. Number five, model civility to students, employees, and all elements of the community by encouraging free expression of opinion by all board members, and engaging in respectful dialogue with fellow board members on matters being considered. So, that is one thing that, not taking myself out of that, we all, you know, I, I need to work on that, and so, I would hope that my fellow board members would see that as well. Number six, respect the confidentiality of information that is privileged under applicable law, and refrain from unauthorized disclosures of matters discussed in closed session. That, to me, is probably one of the biggest concerns. Number 14, refrain from investigating or attempting to resolve complaints received personally, but instead, direct the complainants to the board's complaint system or grievance process to resolve concerns. The, so, those, those are my biggest ones, that we just, I just think that as we're coming into a new session, you know, you just kind of renew our vows, you know, that, that we go and we look at them, and, and internalize how that might apply to each of us individually.
Yes, Mr. Wildebohr?
Well, I didn't go through six or seven like Ms. Craybill there. I just went through one, and I think it's the one that we always need to remember and I never forget, and that's the last one. Remember that, "Board Members First" and greatest concern must be the educational welfare of students attending the public schools. And I think we all, at least, I think, we all strive to do that. I mean, I really, I really do think that as, as a board, we do, you know, but that's got to be our focus. It's, you know, the teachers and TAs are extremely important, bus drivers are extremely important, but at the end of the day, the most important thing is our students. So, that's what I needed to share. Thank you.
I agree.
Ms. Justice?
Yeah, a lot of stuff gets, I think we need to do exactly what Mr. Wildebohr said. That should override everything else above all of it. There's going to be people that are going to disagree personally about what's done. People are, I mean, we're supposed to be here for the kids, not for our own personal, I'm not sure what, perception of what you're, you know, what you, you see as right and wrong, what should be the gauge for what's right and wrong, is what's good for the kids. And we have other laws, of course, we have to follow. There's also accusations that many of us have heard, since you've been on the board for a year, and some of us longer, that really are ridiculous. And we need to stop that. We need to focus on the work. We need to, some of us take things too personal, and don't focus on the kids and what's good for them. I think Mr. Wildebohr has a point, and that's why we're here.
Anyone else? All right, I think, you know, one of my final things as Chair that I want to say is, you know, let's be unified this year. Let's work together. We've got an incredible district with incredible staff and amazing students, and we're coming out of the toughest two years ever. And so, just want to thank you all, senior staff, for being absolute rock stars during really difficult times. Thank you, Dr. Faust, for leadership during difficult times. And we, as a board, let's remember our ethical duties to our constituents and our kids. Yes, Mr. McManus?
I'd like to say this is an opportunity for us to address all the concerns that are brought to us. Yes, we can, and this is how we're going to do it, or no, we can't, and this is exactly why we can't do it. So, everyone needs, we need to defend why we don't do something, but at the same time, explain why we can't do it. And I, I just, we hear the same thing all the time.
Mm-hmm.
We just need to be openly honest, and we need to begin the year like that. We need to address it. Yes, we can do these things, no, we can't.
Ms. Justice, final comment?
Transparency is exactly what he just said, and we need a lot of it, and we haven't in the past. I've been on this board for three years. I agree totally with Mr. McManus. Transparency will let people know what's going on, and it won't be coming back at us so much as, as we can answer questions, they can understand what happens, and we can get better questions and better results. So, thank you, Mr. McManus. We need transparency.
All right, moving along to new business. I believe, who are we welcoming up for this? Dr. Smith, the 2022-23 calendar.
Yes, good evening, and thank you for the opportunity to stand before you and present to you the calendars for the 2022-2023 school year. I'd like to begin by first thanking the members of the calendar committee. It is through their input, their hard work, that we are able to bring these calendars before you. And then also, to thank Mr. Bullier for his leadership in that work as, as well. As you know, a little bit of history, our district has seven calendars. That's down from the nine that we have had for a very, very long time. The first calendar that you see before you is the traditional calendar. This calendar probably has the greatest number of changes when compared to the current year's calendar. We've added some additional days, understanding that we are in a process of recovering lost learning opportunity for our students, so we've increased those days. Also, it was very apparent from the feedback that we received, that there was a need to ensure that we had balanced semesters for, you know, first semester and second semester. That was critical for us as well. Also, very important feedback that we heard and received from teachers was that they wanted to see workdays embedded throughout the year. One of the challenges with that is every workday that we embed throughout the year is one less student day. That's why we're maintaining our extended school hours, so that we can compensate for that as well. So, in that calendar, you'll see that we have 175 school days, well, excuse me, student days. You'll see that we have teacher workdays that follow every grading period, and that we are in compliance with the North Carolina calendar law that restricts when we have to open school, as well as when we close school. The next calendar you'll see is the year-round calendar, and it very much mirrors this year's calendar. We work very closely with our year-round principals, and they work, of course, very closely with their staffs and their parents to develop and design this calendar. So, this reflects what they have indicated as, as needs for them. The next calendar we have is our pre-K calendar, and of course, our pre-K calendar mirrors our traditional calendar. All of our pre-Ks follow that traditional calendar, except for where we might have a half-day or early release. We know that those students won't be in attendance those days. The following calendar is our restart calendar for our pre-K, which, again, this, this is specific to Freeman. They have their own unique calendar here, and it just mirrors our restart calendar. And again, we work very closely with the staff of Sipes and Freeman to develop those restart calendars. And then, we will have our early college calendars for Isaac Bear, and then C-Tech and WEX, shared calendar. And again, we work very closely with those principals, who work very closely with their staffs. And this year, we were really excited. We actually had a student on our calendar committee as well. So, happy to answer any questions that you may have, and just ask for the board's approval of the calendars for the 2020-2023 school year.
All right, Mr. Bullier, and then Ms. Justice.
First, Dr. Smith, thank you for all you did on this committee. I think if everybody looks, they can see it's draft seven. And they don't just, like, pop up. It's a lot of work to put these together. It's been one of my most enjoyable experiences on the board, working with you to do these. Look forward to it all year, as you know. But I did just want to point out that each, you know, one of the things we really heard a lot of from our teachers and our administrators was, you know, burnout, burnout. It's a really long haul to get from, you know, Labor Day all the way through to Thanksgiving, and, you know, and then there's other portions of the year where it just, it wears on you. And so, we did put a designated teacher workday before each report card comes out at the end of each quarter. So, I did just want to point that out to our, to our teachers and our staff. We definitely heard a lot of that. So, thank you very much for listening and putting it together.
Well, thank you very much.
Ms. Justice?
Yeah, I'm a little confused.
Yes.
The traditional calendar. In the past, one of the things that we fought for, for a long time, was to get the first semester finished before Christmas, and now it looks like we're bumping up, we're going to have that, that couple weeks gap there during Christmas holidays, and they're going to come back and have to do exams, and that means here we go again with a bunch of review and stuff. Yeah. So, I thought we had decided in the past, and this has been going on for a long time, that it would be a good idea to, in fact, an excellent idea to end it before the end of the semester. And it looks like now it's being carried on until at least January the 20th? 20th?
So this year, last year, were the first years that we carried the calendar, where we ended first semester before the December break. That is very popular with a lot of students, but once we took into consideration the overall impact. And the overall impact is you end up with very imbalanced, significant imbalances within the semesters. And so you might have your first semester where you have 72 or 73 days of instruction, and your second semester where you have 93 days of instruction. And then when you take into consideration the additional lost time because of exams, it makes it even more difficult. Those were conversations and considerations given, but what I will say is that when presented with the calendars as they are, they were unanimously approved by the calendar committee.
Okay, and also another question on, what about the Cape Fear Community College and UNCW, where they start much earlier? How are we going to do that with the students there?
So we have taken a look at that, and we do have quite a few of our high school students who take the Career in College Promise courses. But we've talked with our high school principals and asked them to be very intentional in building out those student schedules so that students who are taking courses in the fall as well as in the spring will, in all cases possible, mirror that schedule that will not negatively impact them. So they won't have to necessarily over, have courses that are, can't come up with the word, that are, where they're in the community college course and the high school course at the same time.
Can they start early?
And I do not know why the word is escaping me.
Will they be able to start early when the Cape Fear Community College and the university start? Because if we don't start, I mean, their classes start in first of January around this.
So the word I was looking for is overlap, so I apologize for why it escaped me. So prior to this year and the year before, we had children who were successfully navigating those courses. So again, we're asking our high school principals to make accommodations for those students in building out their coursework.
Creative scheduling.
Excuse me?
Creative scheduling.
Yes, and then also, Mr. Bowyer has volunteered to be a liaison with us for the Cape Fear Community College so that we can work with those professors so that they're not negatively impacting our students if a student has to miss a class because they have a high school course that they have to attend. So I feel very confident that we have navigated through those situations.
Okay, so, right, it'll be interesting to see how it works out and then be able to revisit it if it's successful.
Yes, we will definitely keep track and date on that, because again, we don't want to negatively impact children by any decision that we've made, but we do believe that the calendars that we're presenting to you this evening are such that they're in the overall best interest of all the students of the district.
Okay. Thank you.
Yes, you had said, I mean, I love the calendars. I mean, the time at the end of each grading period, I think, is going to be so beneficial. And now that we've done this, parents will have plenty of time to, you know, arrange for those, you know, daycare options that they need. I heard you say the extended hours calendar. So does that mean we're going to school longer each day? Or did I misunderstand?
So, yes, so we've added essentially 10 minutes to the school day to compensate for the reduced number of days within the calendar. Calendar law establishes that we either attend 185 days or we have 1,025 scheduled hours. And so we don't attend 125 days, so we build out an instructional day that's slightly longer than what we typically would have, just simply by 10 minutes, and that is time that we bank. So say, for instance, if we have an inclement weather event where we have to miss a couple of days of school, superintendent can make the decision that we're not going to have to make up that day, just simply because we have a bank, we bank that additional time. So we do this to ensure that we're in compliance with calendar law.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am?
All right. Is there a motion to approve the calendars as presented for 2022-2023?
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Bowyer, second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Wildebohr. Any additional discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
Thank you. And I would be remiss if not, a special thank you to Cherry Smith, who actually creates all of these calendars.
She's not here.
Thank you.
Okay, next item on the agenda, policies for first reading. Mr. Bowyer?
Madam Chair, this is for information purposes only. Before you, you see the policies for first reading. Absent any questions, again, they're on for first reading, and they will be available on our website for the next 30 or so days until our next meeting.
All right, thank you very much, Mr. Bowyer.
May I ask a question?
Yes.
Are there any of these policies do you think we should pay special attention to?
There was nothing that jumped out to me, no.
Okay, thank you.
All right, the item of the evening that I am most excited for, election of board chairperson and vice chair. I will now pass the gavel to Dr. Faust to conduct the election for board chair.
In a moment, I will call for nominations for the office of chair of the New Hanover County Board of Elections. Nominations do not require a second. If more than one person is nominated, the board will vote on nominees in the order of nominations. The first person to receive a majority of board members present is elected chair. Nominations are in order for the office of board chair. Are there any nominations?
Stephanie Walker, Chair.
And I would like to nominate Stephanie Craybill for chair.
Are there any other nominations? If not, nominations for the office of board chair are closed. We will now vote on nominees in order of nomination. Those in favor of Stephanie Walker as chair say aye.
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 Do we want to do a roll call?
Okay.
Ms. Bowyer, I'm sorry, can we do a roll call?
Do a roll call. Ms. Adams?
No.
Mr. Bowyer?
No.
Ms. Justice?
Yes.
Ms. Craybill?
No.
Mr. McManus?
No.
Ms. Walker?
Yes.
And Mr. Wildebohr?
Those in favor of Stephanie Craybill vote aye. Those opposed, say no.
Ms. Adams?
Aye.
Mr. Bowyer?
Aye.
Ms. Justice?
No.
Ms. Craybill?
Yes.
Mr. McManus?
Yes.
Ms. Walker?
No.
And Mr. Wildebohr?
Stephanie Craybill is elected chair by a vote of five to two.
Four to three. Wildebohr said no.
Oh, I'm sorry. Glad you were counting.
Can he do that?
Four to three.
Yeah, can he say no to both nominees?
Yes.
Okay.
Sorry, I need to correct that. Four to three. I will now pass the gavel to Stephanie Craybill. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Congratulations. Thank you.
Can I have the script? Oh, sorry. Thank you.
Okay, so now nominations are in order for the office of vice chair. Are there any nominations?
Hold on, Stephanie Walker.
Are there others? All right, hearing none, the nominations for the office of vice chair are closed. So all those in favor of Stephanie Walker as vice chair, please say aye, according to the roll call.
Ms. Craybill?
Aye. Why am I going first?
Ms. Adams?
Aye.
Mr. Bowyer?
Aye.
Ms. Justice?
Aye.
Mr. McManus?
Yes.
Ms. Walker?
Yes.
And Mr. Wildebohr?
Yes.
Congratulations.
Okay, yeah, congratulations. So the vote was seven to zero. Congratulations, Ms. Walker.
Thank you, Ms. Craybill.
Oh, that's me now. So moving on to the next section, we have the superintendent's report. Oh, do we want to take a break?
We're close to the end, why are we going to break?
That's what I'm saying, yeah, let's do a quick break.
Okay, take a quick break.
Madam Chair.
All right, thank you, Madam ex-chair. Former chair.
Yes.
There we go. Grooving, grooving.
Congratulations.
All right. Moving along to the next section, we have the superintendent's report. Oh, do we want to take a break?
We're close to the end, why are we going to break?
The audit.
That's what I'm saying, yeah, let's do a quick break.
Okay, take a quick break.
Madam Chair.
All right, thank you, Madam ex-chair. Former chair.
Yes.
There we go. Moving, grooving.
Congratulations. Thank you. Can I have the script? Oh, sorry. Thank you.
Okay, so now nominations are in order for the office of vice chair. Are there any nominations?
Hold on, Stephanie Walker.
Are there others? All right, hearing none, the nominations for the office of vice chair are closed. So all those in favor of Stephanie Walker as vice chair, please say aye, according to the roll call.
Ms. Craybill?
Aye. Why am I going first?
Ms. Adams?
Aye.
Mr. Bowyer?
Aye.
Ms. Justice?
Aye.
Mr. McManus?
Yes.
Ms. Walker?
Yes.
And Mr. Wildebohr?
Yes.
Congratulations.
Okay, yeah, congratulations. So the vote was seven to zero. Congratulations, Ms. Walker.
Thank you, Ms. Craybill.
Oh, that's me now. Okay. So moving on to the next section, we have the superintendent's report. Oh, do we want to take a break?
We're close to the end, why are we going to break?
That's what I'm saying, yeah, let's do a quick break.
Okay, take a quick break.
Madam Chair.
All right, thank you, Madam ex-chair. Former chair.
Yes.
There we go. Moving, grooving.
Congratulations. Thank you. Congratulations. Thank you. Can I have the script? Oh, sorry. Thank you.
Okay, so now nominations are in order for the office of vice chair. Are there any nominations?
Hold on, Stephanie Walker.
Are there others? All right, hearing none, the nominations for the office of vice chair are closed. So all those in favor of Stephanie Walker as vice chair, please say aye, according to the roll call.
Ms. Craybill?
Aye. Why am I going first?
Ms. Adams?
Aye.
Mr. Bowyer?
Aye.
Ms. Justice?
Aye.
Mr. McManus?
Yes.
Ms. Walker?
Yes.
And Mr. Wildebohr?
Yes.
Congratulations.
Okay, yeah, congratulations. So the vote was seven to zero. Congratulations, Ms. Walker.
Thank you, Ms. Craybill.
Oh, that's me now. Okay. So moving on to the next section, we have the superintendent's report. Oh, do we want to take a break?
We're close to the end, why are we going to break?
That's what I'm saying, yeah, let's do a quick break.
Okay, take a quick break.
Madam Chair.
All right, thank you, Madam ex-chair. Former chair.
Yes.
There we go. Moving, grooving.
Congratulations. Thank you. Congratulations. Thank you. Can I have the script? Oh, sorry. Thank you.
Okay, so now nominations are in order for the office of vice chair. Are there any nominations?
Hold on, Stephanie Walker.
Are there others? All right, hearing none, the nominations for the office of vice chair are closed. So all those in favor of Stephanie Walker as vice chair, please say aye, according to the roll call.
Ms. Craybill?
Aye. Why am I going first?
Ms. Adams?
Aye.
Mr. Bowyer?
Aye.
Ms. Justice?
Aye.
Mr. McManus?
Yes.
Ms. Walker?
Yes.
And Mr. Wildebohr?
Yes.
Congratulations.
Okay, yeah, congratulations. So the vote was seven to zero. Congratulations, Ms. Walker.
Thank you, Ms. Craybill.
Oh, that's me now. Okay. So moving on to the next section, we have the superintendent's report. Oh, do we want to take a break?
Actually, it's information.
We're close to the end, why are we going to break?
The audit.
That's what I'm saying, yeah, let's do a quick break.
Okay, take a quick break.
Madam Chair.
All right, thank you, Madam ex-chair. Former chair.
Yes.
There we go. Moving, grooving.
Congratulations. Thank you. Congratulations. Thank you. Can I have the script? Oh, sorry. Thank you.
Okay, so now nominations are in order for the office of vice chair. Are there any nominations?
Hold on, Stephanie Walker.
Are there others? All right, hearing none, the nominations for the office of vice chair are closed. So all those in favor of Stephanie Walker as vice chair, please say aye, according to the roll call.
Ms. Craybill?
Aye. Why am I going first?
Ms. Adams?
Aye.
Mr. Bowyer?
Aye.
Ms. Justice?
Aye.
Mr. McManus?
Yes.
Ms. Walker?
Yes.
And Mr. Wildebohr?
Yes.
Okay, yeah, congratulations.
So the vote was seven to zero. Congratulations, Ms. Walker.
Thank you, Ms. Craybill.
Oh, that's me now. Okay. So moving on to the next section, we have the superintendent's report. Oh, do we want to take a break?
We're close to the end, why are we going to break?
That's what I'm saying, yeah, let's do a quick break.
Okay, take a quick break.
Madam Chair.
All right, thank you, Madam ex-chair. Former chair.
Yes.
There we go. Moving, grooving.
Congratulations. Thank you. Congratulations. Thank you. Can I have the script? Oh, sorry. Thank you.
Okay, so now nominations are in order for the office of vice chair. Are there any nominations?
Hold on, Stephanie Walker.
Are there others?
The start to this will be with the compensation study currently being done within our district led by Dr. Barnes in the Human Resources Division. The study is expected to be completed in February, at which time we will have to decide the prioritization of the data collected. Members of the Classified Advisory Committee attended the compensation study firm last week to express their concerns and priorities. Next week, our high school students will begin the end of course and CTE final exams. I wish them all the best. The Communications Division will be promoting good testing habits and how to handle test anxiety across our social media accounts and to the students throughout this week and next. Last year, we held a district-wide spirit week during the last week before winter break. During the week of December 13th, we will do the same. Details and themes will be released on Friday in the Inside NHCS. Last year, we raised 3,000 pounds of peanut butter and jelly for nourish and see for families in need around our community. This year, I challenge our district to raise 4,000 pounds. Also, I want us to take a look at our TAs who have four-year degrees and work with them through our Human Resources to see if they are eligible for lateral entry, if they're interested in teaching. Last week, or starting last week, members of senior staff have been covering lunch duties for elementary schools across the district. This past Friday, I covered lunch duty at Rachel Freeman, and any chance I get, well, I think not only did I get, any chance that bit. Because I think I was outperformed by HR. He had more students around him than I did at the table. So, any chance I get to spend time with students, we definitely do enjoy it. So, we will have, we have a schedule, and we'll be going out to other elementary schools. And it was just great to be out at Rachel Freeman last Friday and give their teachers a break. And the unique part was that the teachers did not want to leave their students, like, we've got them. They kept confirming, "Are you sure?" And I had to say, "I am a certified teacher." Like, I can. So, we, there were, it was Josh, Chris, Dawn, and myself. We're out there at Rachel Freeman on last weekend, so the next schedule, the others will go. So, we'll definitely be giving updates and sharing the fun, and I'm sure there'll be pictures to follow. Thank you.
Can you add the board members on to that covering lunch? I think we could probably handle it, maybe.
Sure, sure.
Okay, thank you for that. All right, so, next on our agenda is the Board Chair's report. And so, yeah, this is my first one, thank you. First of all, my first statement is, we need to just take a moment to wish Board Member Mr. McManus a very happy birthday tomorrow. He told me I'd have to kill me if I told you how old he was, but he's older than me, older, he's much more mature than me. So, first of all, I have some thank yous that I'd like to say, first of all, to my Board of Education colleagues for having the confidence in me, you know, to lead us this year. To Stephanie Adams for your leadership and service over the past year and a half as our Board Chair. And then also to Stephanie Walker for her desire and willingness to serve and lead in any capacity. And so, she was elected as our Board Vice Chair, and I'm very happy to have her as my partner. Second, I look forward to working with each and every one of you guys and leading us in a collaborative way so that we can focus on the work of what's best for students. And I'm feeling good vibes already. I know that we, as a board, are going to disagree, and we're going to have to debate issues before making decisions and setting policy. But I don't want us to be disagreeable as we do that. So, I'm going to work really hard, and Stephanie's going to work really hard with me to do that so that we can be professional and supportive of each other, knowing that we have the opportunity now and the responsibility to model good behavior for our students and our staff and our communities. So, it will be a challenge, but we are up for it. And I want every member of our community to feel that they, and our school system employees, that they all have a voice, and that voice matters to us. So, tonight, we've heard a lot, you know, about the emerging set of plans for our strategic plan and the priorities that we need to do. So, I would encourage, you know, everybody who is a member of our community and a member of our school district to take the surveys, because now is your opportunity. And, you know, the emails are good, but if we can collate all the data together, then we could really appreciate, you know, your input. And I just want to reiterate that I'm committed to making sure that we have opportunities for us to listen with respect and empathy and to have meaningful two-way conversations and communication with open and honest discussion, which I know we can do and I know we want to do. So, again, I look forward to leading this board with the assistance and support of Stephanie Walker and all of you. And we have challenges ahead of us, we do. But I think by working together and collaboratively on focusing on our students, then we're going to find the solutions that we need. So, thank you very much for that. Okay, so, now, Nelson, I'm reading off the updated ones, so, for the numbers. So, the, we are on to 18 committee reports. Does anybody have any committee reports that they need to share with us from board committees?
I'm Madam Chair. The only thing I just wanted to mention, I don't have the dates in front of me. I did give Ms. Adams a copy, my only copy that Dr. Smith gave me. But our EDI meetings are going to be quarterly now, and our next one is going to be January. And I don't have the exact date on that. But we have done a restructuring this year, and Dr. Smith has done a wonderful job with that. And so, there are going to be some exciting things happening in the EDI realm coming up in the next year. So, I just wanted to go ahead and mention that our meetings have changed. So, some people have questions by, we canceled December.
Okay, thank you. All right, so correspondence, does, does anybody have any of that? You received anything noteworthy that we need to talk about? Okay, then call the audience, we're not doing, we already combined. Under announcements, the following board-related meetings will be held during the month of December. So, first, EDI will not be held in the month of December, so we're going to go ahead and start off with that. Policy Committee will meet on Tuesday, December 14th, at 9:00 a.m. in the Board of Education Center. But we do it via Zoom, you know, so you can, you know, tune in to watch that via the New Hanover County Schools TV YouTube channel. The Family Communications Committee will meet on Thursday, December 16th, at 5:00 p.m. for a roundtable discussion via Zoom. That we will do that, the audience seating capacity is 170, but we're not going to be here. So, the general public will again have the opportunity to watch that on New Hanover County Schools TV YouTube channel. The Title IX Committee will also not meet in the month of December. So, next on the agenda is a second closed session pursuant to State Statute 143-318.11A13 and 11A16. This is a major portion of the work that we do. This is where the school board is administering these federal and state programs. These are the ones that we deem to be major federal and state programs. There are seven of them. The cross-cutting cuts across a lot of the requirements for those federal funds, and so that's what that means. But so, if you were to count, there's actually eight, but the cross-cutting is a part of all the testing for those other four federal programs. And what we're doing is there's 14 compliance requirements, and we're testing the controls for each of those, as well as the requirements for each of those that are deemed direct material to the program. All right, let's move on to the next slide. So, key highlights, so here's what everybody really wants to know, the results of the audit. So, as I mentioned, we issued those four opinions. All four opinions are what we call unmodified opinion or clean opinion. That's the results that you want, that's the best results you can get. That is our assurance, that's the highest level of assurance that we can give you, that your financial statements are free from all those material misstatements we were looking for, as well as in compliance, so you're in compliance of administering all those federal and state dollars as well. As far as internal controls, as I mentioned, we don't opine on them, but we do not have any significant deficiencies or material weaknesses to report to you as a result of our review of all those internal controls. And for single audit, we did report one finding related to single audit. It's related to the North Carolina Pre-Kindergarten Program for Eligibility. The finding is deemed to be a non-material, non-compliance. It was one instance from the sample that we selected where a health assessment wasn't filed within the 30 days of when the child entered the program. And so, we're just required to report that we had that finding. And then, as for adjustments, so during the audit, no adjusting journal entries came about as a result of our procedures. And so, that means that there are, again, good internal controls and processes in place to properly capture all of the financial activity of the school board throughout the year. Let's go to the next slide. So, in summary, here's what you should take away from tonight's presentation, clean opinions, that there were no misstatements identified. There was the one compliance finding, no issues with the journal controls, so no significant deficiencies or material weaknesses. And this is just my chance to thank management for all their cooperation. As you can imagine, it's testing all those state and grant dollars, state and federal grant dollars. It's a lot of information that we ask, and it's a little relentless. It goes from, we start in April or May, and it goes all the way through to the end of October and sometimes into November. So, we just appreciate them continuing to give us all the documentation that we need. And go to the last slide, and that's just open for questions. Yes, Mr. Bowyer.
I ask two questions after every audit, and, you know, just approximately, how many organizations do you audit each year?
Me personally, or the firm?
The firm.
It's probably somewhere around, I'm going to say 1,500.
Okay, yeah, thank you. And, you know, in your opinion, how would you assess the financial health of New Hanover County Schools?
I would, I would say that it's healthy. I mean, I'm sure, as you know, this school board is unique in the fact that you're given your school facilities from the county, and you're heavily reliant on the federal and state dollars and dollars that come from the county to operate. And so, given that, I think that the organization is, is healthy as they're, you know, using those dollars as budgeted.
Thank you very much, and as always, a small thank you very much for your leadership of our financial system.
Thank you. I'd like to thank our staff that did all, we're fully on this information and working with April's team, especially Karen McCall, who was instrumental in putting this document together and the rest of our team, so. Any other question?
Ms. Justice?
Yeah, this is required by law, or do we do this because we want to make sure our organization's healthy?
It is required by law.
Okay, and it is, it is required, well, still good to know we're healthy. How much, how much does that usually cost per year for an audit like this?
I'm not going to remember off the top of my head. It's probably in the $60,000 to $70,000 range. April, you probably know exactly how much we paid you. It's been a while since we did that contract.
As, as it gets more and more complex, I do believe that you're correct, it's in that $60,000 range, I believe, or less, yeah.
Okay, and I guess I'll just follow up with questions. So, this is a standardized process usually in, in how you go about it, and your outcomes, like you're reporting to us now, correct? It's certified, and the government says this is the way it needs to be done, is that correct?
Yeah, the LGC, which is the local government commission out of the state treasurer's office, is what require, has the law that requires the audit be conducted during the year. You know, within the, it's within four months of the year-end, it's required, and there's a 30-day grace period, so really five months. And, and we follow the audit standards, as I mentioned, the governmental auditing standards and the auditing standards of the generally accepted in the United States. And so, those tell us how, how to audit the organization.
Okay, thank you.
And I would just mention, in addition to this audit, the federal programs working through DPI also come and audit us throughout the year.
Okay, thank you, Mary Hazel and April. Appreciate your time and effort to make sure that we have good, clean books.
My pleasure. Good night.
Good night. Good night.
Okay, all right, so now, we're moving on to item number 16, the superintendent's report.
14. Am I not reading right? What am I doing? Okay, 14.
After three years, we finally have a budget. I want to thank Mary Hazel and her team for work and dedication that they have been doing over the past months to ensure that our staff receives their bonuses and retro pay. With the state budget, we now look forward to making additional improvements across the district. A start to this will be with the compensation study currently being done within our district led by Dr. Barnes in the Human Resources Division. The study is expected to be completed in February, at which time, we will have to decide the prioritization of the data collected. Members of the Classified Advisory Committee attended the compensation study firm last week to express their concerns and priorities. Next week, our high school students will begin the end of course and CTE final exams. I wish them all the best. The Communications Division will be promoting good testing habits and how to handle test anxiety across our social media accounts and to the students throughout this week and next. Last week, we held, last year, we held a district-wide spirit week during the last week before winter break. During the week of December 13th, we will do the same. Details and themes will be released on Friday in the Inside NHCS. Last year, we raised 3,000 pounds of peanut butter and jelly for nourish and see for families in need around our community. This year, I challenge our district to raise 4,000 pounds. Also, I want us to take a look at our TAs who have four-year degrees and work with them through our Human Resources to see if they are eligible for lateral entry, if they're interested in teaching. Last week, or starting last week, members of senior staff have been covering lunch duties for elementary schools across the district. This past Friday, I covered lunch duty at Rachel Freeman, and any chance I get, well, I think not only did I get, any chance that bit. Because I think I was outperformed by HR. He had more students around him than I did at the table. So, any chance I get to spend time with students, we definitely do enjoy it. So, we will have, we have a schedule, and we'll be going out to other elementary schools. And it was just great to be out at Rachel Freeman last Friday and give their teachers a break. And the unique part was that the teachers did not want to leave their students, like, we've got them. They kept confirming, "Are you sure?" And I had to say, "I am a certified teacher." Like, I can. So, we, there were, it was Josh, Chris, Dawn, and myself. We're out there at Rachel Freeman on last weekend, so the next schedule, the others will go. So, we'll definitely be giving updates and sharing the fun, and I'm sure there'll be pictures to follow. Thank you.
Can you add the board members on to that covering lunch? I think, I think we could probably handle it, maybe.
Sure, sure.
Okay, thank you for that. All right, so, next on our agenda is the Board Chair's report. And so, yeah, this is my first one, thank you. First of all, my first statement is, we need to just take a moment to wish Board Member Mr. McManus a very happy birthday tomorrow. He told me I'd have to kill me if I told you how old he was, but he's older than me, older, he's much more mature than me. So, so first of all, I have some thank yous that I'd like to say, first of all, to my Board of Education colleagues for having the confidence in me, you know, to lead us this year. To Stephanie Adams for your leadership and service over the past year and a half as our Board Chair. And then also to Stephanie Walker for her desire and willingness to serve and lead in any capacity. And so, she was elected as our Board Vice Chair, and I'm very happy to have her as my partner. Second, I look forward to working with each and every one of you guys and leading us in a collaborative way so that we can focus on the work of what's best for students. And I'm feeling good vibes already. I know that we, as a board, are going to disagree, and we're going to have to debate issues before making decisions and setting policy. But I don't want us to be disagreeable as we do that. So, I'm going to work really hard, and Stephanie's going to work really hard with me to do that so that we can be professional and supportive of each other, knowing that we have the opportunity now and the responsibility to model good behavior that's for our students and our staff and our communities. So, it will be a challenge, but we are up for it. And I want every member of our community to feel that they, and our school system employees, that they all have a voice, and that voice matters to us. So, tonight, we've heard a lot, you know, about the emerging set of plans for our strategic plan and the priorities that we need to do. So, I would encourage, you know, everybody who is a member of our community and a member of our school district to take the surveys, because now is your opportunity. And, you know, the emails are good, but if we can collate all the data together, then we could really appreciate, you know, your input. And I just want to reiterate that I'm committed to making sure that we have opportunities for us to listen with respect and empathy and to have meaningful two-way conversations and communication with open and honest discussion, which I know we can do and I know we want to do. So, again, I look forward to leading this board with the assistance and support of Stephanie Walker and all of you. And we have challenges ahead of us, we do. But I think by working together and collaboratively on focusing on our students, then we're going to find the solutions that we need. So, thank you very much for that. Okay, so, now, Nelson, I'm reading off the updated one, so, for the numbers. So, the, we are on to 18 committee reports. Does anybody have any committee reports that they need to share with us from board committees?
I'm Madam Chair. The only thing I just wanted to mention, I don't have the data dates in front of me. I did give Ms. Adams a copy, my only copy that Dr. Smith gave me. But our EDI meetings are going to be quarterly now, and our next one is going to be January, and I don't have the exact date on that. But we have done a restructuring this year, and Dr. Smith has done a wonderful job with that. And so, there are going to be some exciting things happening in the EDI realm coming up in the next year. So, I just wanted to go ahead and mention that our meetings have changed. So, some people have questions by, we canceled December.
Okay, thank you. All right, so correspondence, does, does anybody have any of that? You received anything noteworthy that we need to talk about? Okay, then call the audience, we're not doing, we already combined. Under announcements, the following board-related meetings will be held during the month of December. So, first, EDI will not be held in the month of December, so we're going to go ahead and start off with that. Policy Committee will meet on Tuesday, December 14th, at 9:00 a.m. in the Board of Education Center. But we, we do it via Zoom, you know, so you can, you know, tune in to watch that via the New Hanover County Schools TV YouTube channel. The Family Communications Committee will meet on Thursday, December 16th, at 5:00 p.m. for a roundtable discussion via Zoom. That we will do that, the audience, well, the audience seating capacity is 170, but we're not going to be here. So, the, the general public will again have the opportunity to watch that on New Hanover County Schools TV YouTube channel. The Title IX Committee will also not meet in the month of December. So, next on the agenda is a second closed session pursuant to State Statute 143-318.11A13 and 11A16.
This is the way it needs to be done, is that correct?
Yeah, the LGC, which is the local government commission out of the state treasurer's office, is what require, has the law that requires the audit be conducted during the year, you know, within the, it's within four months of the year end, it's required and there's a 30-day grace period, so really five months. And, and we follow the audit standards, as I mentioned, the governmental auditing, governmental auditing standards and the auditing standards of the general accepted in the United States. And so those tell us how, how to audit the organization.
Okay, thank you.
And I would just mention, in addition to, to this audit, the federal programs working through DPI also come and audit us throughout the year.
Okay, thank you, Mary Hazel and April, appreciate your time and effort to make sure that we have good, clean books.
My pleasure, good night.
Good night. Good night.
Okay, all right, so now we're moving on to item number 16, the superintendent's report.
Fourteen.
Am I not reading right? What am I doing? Okay. Fourteen. Ain't she great?
No, isn't it?
Yeah, sixteen. After three years, we finally have a budget. I want to thank Mary Hazel and her team for work and dedication that they have been doing over the past months to ensure that our staff receives their bonuses and retro pay. With the state budget, we now look forward to making additional improvements across the district. A start to this will be with the compensation study currently being done within our, our district led by Dr. Barnes in the Human Resources Division. The study is expected to be completed in February, at which time we will have to decide the prioritization of the data collected. Members of the classified advisory committee attended the compensation study firm last week to express their concerns and priorities. Next week, our high school students will begin the end of course and CTE final exams. I wish them all the best. The Communications Division will be promoting good testing habits and how to handle test anxiety across our social media accounts and to the students throughout this week and next. Last week we held, last year we held a district-wide spirit week during the last week before winter break. During the week of December 13th, we will do the same. Details and themes will be released on Friday in the inside NHCS. Last year, we raised 3,000 pounds of peanut butter and jelly for nourish and see for families in need around our community. This year, I challenge our district to raise 4,000 pounds. Also, I want us to take a look at our TAs who have four-year degrees and work with them through our Human Resources to see if they are eligible for lateral entry, if they're interested in teaching. Last week, or starting last week, members of senior staff have been covering lunch duties for elementary schools across the district. This past Friday, I covered lunch duty at Rachel Freeman and any chance I get, well, I think, not only did I get, any chance that bit, because I think I was outperformed by HR, he had more students around him than I did at the table. So, any chance I get to spend time with students, we definitely do enjoy it. So, we will have, we have a schedule, we'll be going out to other elementary schools. And it was just great to be out at Rachel Freeman last Friday and give their teachers a break. And the unique part was that the teachers did not want to leave their students, like we've got them, they kept confirming, "Are you sure?" And I had to, I was like, "I'm a certified teacher." Like, I can, so, we, there were, it was Josh, Chris, Dawn, and myself were out there at Free, Rachel Freeman on last weekend, so the next schedule, the others will go. So, we'll definitely be giving updates and sharing the fun, and I'm sure there'll be pictures to follow. Thank you.
Can you add the board members on to that covering lunch? I think, I think we could probably handle it, maybe.
Sure, sure.
Okay, thank you for that. All right, so, next on our agenda is the board chair's report. And so, yeah, this is my first one, thank you. First of all, my, my first statement is, I, we need to just take a moment to wish board member, Mr. McManus, a very happy birthday tomorrow.
Birthday, Hugh.
He told me I'd have to kill me if I told you how old he was, but he's older than me, older, he's much, more mature than me. So, so first of all, I, I have some thank yous that I'd like to say, first of all, to my Board of Education colleagues for having the confidence in me, you know, to lead us this year, to Stephanie Adams for your leadership and service over the past year and a half as our board chair, and then also to Stephanie Walker for her desire and willingness to serve and lead in any capacity. And so she was elected as our board vice chair, and I'm very happy to have her as my partner. Second, I look forward to working with each and every one of you guys and leading us in a collaborative way so that we can focus on the work of what's best for students. And I'm, I'm feeling good vibes already. I know that we, as a board, are going to disagree, and we're going to have to debate issues before making decisions and setting policy, but I don't want us to be disagreeable as we do that. So, I'm going to work really hard, and Stephanie's going to work really hard with me to do that, so that we can be professional and supportive of each other, knowing that we have the opportunity now and the responsibility to model good behavior that's for our students and our staff and our communities. So, it will be a challenge, but we, we are up for it. And I want every member of our community to feel that they, that, and, and our school system employees, that they all have a voice, and that voice matters to us. So, tonight, we've heard a lot, you know, about the emerging set of plans for our strategic plan and the priorities that we need to do. So, I, I would encourage, you know, everybody who is a member of our community and a member of our school district to take the surveys, because now is your opportunity. And, you know, the emails are good, but if we can collate all the data together, then we could really appreciate, you know, your input. And I just want to reiterate that I'm, I'm committed to making sure that we have opportunities for us to listen with respect and empathy and to have meaningful two-way conversations and communication with open and honest discussion, which I know we can do and I know we want to do. So, again, I look forward to leading this board with the assistance and support of Stephanie Walker and all of you. And we have challenges ahead of us, we do, but by, I think by working together and collaboratively on focusing on our students, then we're going to find the solutions that we need. So, thank you very much for that. Okay, so, now, the, Nelson, I'm reading off the updated one, so, for the numbers. So, the, we are on to 18 committee reports. Does anybody have any committee reports that they need to share with us from board committees?
I'm Madam Chair. The only thing I just wanted to mention, I don't have the, the data, dates in front of me, I did give Ms. Adams a copy, my, my only copy that Dr. Smith gave me, but our EDI meetings are going to be quarterly now, and our next one is going to be January, and I don't have the exact date on that. But we have done a restructuring this year, and Dr. Smith has done a wonderful job with that. And so, there are going to be some exciting things happening in the EDI realm coming up in the next year. So, I just wanted to go ahead and mention that, our meetings have changed. So, some people have questions by, we canceled December.
Okay, thank you. All right, so correspondence, does, does anybody have any of that? You received anything that you, noteworthy that we need to talk about? Okay, then call the audience, we're not doing, we already combined. Under announcements, the following board-related meetings will be held during the month of December. So, first, EDI will not be held in the month of December, so we're going to go ahead and just start off with that. Policy committee will meet on Tuesday, December 14th, at 9:00 a.m. in the Board of Education Center, but we, we do it via Zoom, you know, so you can, you know, tune in to watch that, the, via the New Hanover County Schools TV YouTube channel. The Family Communications Committee will meet on Thursday, December the 16th, at 5:00 p.m. for a roundtable discussion via Zoom, that we will do that. The audience, well, the audience seating capacity is 170, but we're not going to be here. So, the, the general public will again have the opportunity to watch that on New Hanover County Schools TV YouTube channel. The Title IX Committee will also not meet in the month of December. So, next on the agenda is a second closed session pursuant to State Statute 143-318. Dot 11A13 and 11A16 to consider personnel matters and maintain the confidentiality of personnel records and consult with the board's attorney. And do I do a motion to do that? Do I have a motion to take us into closed session? Um, thank you, Mr. Boyer, is there a second?
Second.
Second, Ms. Adams, thank you. All those, do we just say all in favor, do we vote on that, or just, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, any opposed? Okay, we are officially in closed session. is adjournment. Hearing no opposition to adjourning, I am going to adjourn the meeting.